Welcome to the Board of Education's May 4, 2023 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Horn.
Face the flag, salute. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Also, the last day of school for students will be half a day on Wednesday, May 24. And the last day for teachers is Thursday, May 25. On behalf of the Board, I want to wish all of our students, families, and staff a wonderful and restful summer break, and also all of our teachers a happy Teacher Appreciation Week. You're almost there, but we do appreciate all of you and your hard work, as well as all of our support staff. Board members, you received an email from Ms. Coteley last night regarding Item 10D and the contract with King Construction for renovations at Lincoln Park Center. The contract amount was listed correctly on the contract, but the amount stated in the agenda caption and on the fiscal note was not correct and had been taken from an earlier contract draft. Both of those have been updated to reflect the correct amount of $4,478,590. As far as changes to the agenda, no one requested it on Monday, but I do feel that we need to remove Item 10 from the consent agenda. So I'm removing that from the consent agenda and just placing it at the top of the regular agenda items. Are there any other requested changes to this agenda? Do we have a motion to approve? So a motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Henderson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent Ryswick, I think we have some special recognitions tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do, and I'm actually going to let Dr. Wilson prepare for that to recognize the valedictorian and salutatorians from all of our high schools. Guys, welcome. Good to glad you're here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Superintendent Ryswick. It's my great pleasure to join with you as we recognize some very special students tonight. Board Policy I-330 states that the valedictorian and salutatorian at each of our high schools shall earn the highest and next highest grade point averages, but these young men and women are much more than these high-grade point averages that they have carried through their high school careers. They are leaders in our schools and communities, and they give us all confidence that we're in great hands for a very promising future. I'm proud and honored to serve them and to introduce them to you this evening. So, students, handsome group, thank you for being here. I will introduce you in alphabetic order by your school first and then your name. When I read your name, please come forward and stand in front of the board table area here. Ms. Coteley has got something she's going to be handing to each of you as you come forward. Once we have the whole group, we're going to take some photos with the Board and the superintendent. Also, if I could ask everyone in the audience to please hold your applause until the end. We will celebrate all of our amazing students after I finish reading the names. There are a few students who could not join us tonight, I think. Were still there? Couple? Because of our scheduling conflicts, but we are going to read all names aloud, and we'll get their certificate to them at their schools. All right? So, without further ado, we're going to begin So without further ado, we're going to begin with Austin East Magnet High School and our valedictorian, Darius Jackson. Salutatorian, Tamaya Stinson. Is she coming in? Awesome, there she is. Next, we're going to recognize Bearden High School valedictorian Kathleen Hartano. Salutatorian Nathan Brusseau. I'm going to take a moment here to offer a special note that if there is a tie through the 100th of a point for either the valedictorian or the salutatorian, then all students qualifying for that award will be named, and you're going to see why I offered that information in just a second. So from Career Magnet Academy, we have four co-valedictorians. The first one is Ellie Arway. Another valedictorian, Ariana Beatty. Duncan Green. And our last valedictorian, Angel Helen. Our salutatorian from Career Magnet Academy is Haley Komorowski. Next, we'll be recognizing for Carter High School, valedictorian Lakin Wolfenbarger. Salutatorian Samuel North. From Central High School, valedictorian Christian Cox. And salutatorian Jack Turrentine. Want to kind of help them? Kind of push back a little bit, guys. There you go. We got more coming. All right. Farragut High School is happy to recognize two co-valedictorians. The first one is Erin Kim. The second, Justin Lee. And our salutatorian from Farragut High School is Radhima Singh. From Fulton High School, valedictorian Shaylin Bargo. Salutatorian is Lydia Endakai Saba. I really hope I got that right. Next, from Gibbs High School, our valedictorian is Kennedy Graves. Our salutatorian is Carolina Pittman. From Hall's High School, our valedictorian is Bailey Jeans. And salutatorian Isabel Benson. From Harden Valley Academy, a name that may be familiar to many of you on the Board, our very own valedictorian Grace Deckard. And our salutatorian Elijah Johnson. Karnes High School has two co-valedictorians. The first is Eli Hicks. And our second valedictorian, Meredith Morgan. Salutatorian from Karnes High School is Ethan Crandell. From the Knox County Schools Virtual High School, our valedictorian is Leah Wilson. And our salutatorian is Mackenzie Scott. Next, from LNN STEM Academy, our valedictorian is Hayden Braquen. And salutatorian Duncan Arnold. From Powell High School, the valedictorian is Kim Ha. We have co-salutatorians from Powell High School. The first is Bryce Jardre. And the second is Annabelle Rashaw. From South Doyle High School, our valedictorian is Thomas Green. He's at a soccer game. Okay. Our salutatorian is Maxwell Hull. And finally, from West High School, we have two co-valedictorians. The first is Oliver Himmelgarn. And our second valedictorian from West High School is Ayaz Sultan. The salutatorian from West High School is Benjamin Schaefer. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you the Knox County Schools' valedictorians and salutatorians of the class of 2023. Now you all be nice and do what Carly says because she's the one that sends out the snow notices when we cancel school. I know she needs you to get in tight for your picture because there's lots of you guys, and so just work with Carly. Can get everybody, the board members as well? All right, now board members, I think, are joining?
Dr. Ricewick, can you do a push-up in front of our seven? All right. Hello. So, board members, we have one more recognition tonight. Guess we'll wait for just a second. We have one more recognition tonight, and then we will take a five-minute recess and let folks in the overflow room come in. I believe Dr. Adams, this is you?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. It is my honor and privilege to recognize our officer at Bearden High School and our school nurse at Bearden High School. At this time, I'd like to call Chief Perry Yard to the podium to recognize and provide them with a token of our appreciation.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. It's always an honor to be able to talk to the Board, but today I'm especially honored because not only do I get to recognize one of my officers, I get to recognize what we see as teamwork and a success story in the teamwork with staff members and security officers and folks who are just assigned to the school as volunteers. I mean, this is a great story. I want to share it with you. I'll keep my remarks short. I know I tend to ramble on just a little bit. Forgive me, I have a waiver from New York. Can we bring, are we going to bring them up first? Can we bring Officer Tyler Bowles? And then Nurse Rebecca Rice? UT Student Nurse Bailey Bentley? And UT Student Nurse Rebecca Doris? Thank you. On Tuesday, 18 April, 2023, about 12:15 hours, Officer Tyler Bowles, while on duty at Bearden High School, was called via radio to respond to a medical emergency in one of the classrooms. Upon arrival, Officer Bowles was made aware of an unresponsive staff member in cardiac arrest. Needing the AED machine, Officer Bowles ran down the hall to locate and bring back the AED machine while the BHS school nurse Rebecca Rice and the two UT student nurses Bailey Bentley and Rebecca Doris moved the staff members to a safe location on the floor to check for a pulse and prepare for CPR. Officer Bowles then began chest compressions while Nurse Rice set up the AED machine and placed the pads on the staff member. After the Nurse Rice deployed the device, Officer Bowles provided lifesaving chest compressions, approximately 80, and then each of the student nurses took turns with compressions before Bowles continued with another 80 to 100 compressions. Officer Bowles was needed to do these compressions as long as possible due to Bowles' strength -- this is where you're supposed to pose -- and stature of the staff member. Officer Bowles and the two student nurses continued chest compressions for more than five minutes until KFD and AMR arrived. Thanks to the quick response and the continued actions of Officer Bowles and the medical staff at Bearden High School that day, the staff member received the medical attention needed to restart his heart and keep him alive while AMR responded to take him to the hospital. Congratulations to all four. We're going to be giving the chief's lifesaver award to all four of you, and if you'll indulge me for a round of applause. I have several books I'm going to -- no, I'm just kidding.
Thank you. So, board members, we are going to take a five-minute recess because I know some of our guests probably aren't wanting to stay for the meeting, and we have some people in overflow. So we're going to take a five-minute recess just to kind of give them an opportunity and if some seats free up, others an opportunity to come in. All right, so with that, we are back from recess. And before we get into our regular agenda, I just want to remind everyone in attendance tonight, I know sometimes issues come up that people are really passionate about, and we're glad that you chose to attend this evening, but please, please, please note the elevated noise makes it very difficult for us to hear each other as well as for you and people at home to hear what we're saying. So we ask that you refrain from interruptions, clapping, booing, cheering, all that snapping, whatever. And just be mindful of that. We certainly do not want to ask anyone to leave tonight, but we do have a lot to get through tonight, so just be mindful of that. We can't just have constant interruptions, so we will have to ask you to leave. Also, if you want to have a discussion with someone sitting beside you, please step outside to do so. All right, and with that, we will go into our regular agenda. Ms. Cottney?
Item seven, consent agenda.
So motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight, A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E124, Risk Management as amended.
A sub motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E201, Workers' Compensation as amended.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, C, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G150, Staff Community Relations as amended.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, D, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G180, Personnel Files as amended.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, E, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G211, Smoking and Use of Tobacco as amended.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, F, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G220, Harassment of Employees as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, G, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G240, Compensation Guides and Contracts for Professional Personnel as amended.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, H, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G280, Qualifications and Duties of Teachers as amended.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Mr. Triplet. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, I, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G430, Personnel Health Examinations and Communicable Diseases as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Henderson. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, J, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G461, Sick and Bereavement Leave as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Henderson. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, K, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G530, Transfers of Classified Personnel as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Triplet. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, L, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G560, Classified Personnel Health Examinations and Communicable Diseases as amended.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Mr. Watson. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, M, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G590, Leaves and Absences of Classified Personnel as amended.
Motion by Mr. Triplet, a second by Ms. Henderson. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight, N, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J123, Summer School Attendance as amended.
Motion to adopt on first reading due to the timeliness.
So a motion to adopt on first reading by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Henderson. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine, A, approved Knox County Government Grant in the amount of $62,371 with required matching funds in the amount of $62,371 for replacement of auditorium seating and audio equipment upgrades to Bearden Middle Schools auditorium.
A motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine, B, approved Knox County Government Grant in the amount of $62,700 with required matching funds in the amount of $62,700 to be held in trust through June 30th, 2033 for a future Karnes High School fieldhouse.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Mr. Watson. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine, C, approved memorandum of understanding with Knox Education Foundation for grant funds in the amount of $12,000 designated to stipends for mentor teachers approved in a partnership agreement with Relay Graduate School of Education.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine, D, approved Nishwonger Foundation AP Access for All Mini Grants in the total amount of $927.07 for Fulton High School.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Horn. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine, E, approve Oak Ridge Associated Universities Extreme Classroom Makeover Grant in the amount of $5,000 for Karnes Middle School.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine, F, approved pilot company grant in the amount of $2,000 for Maynard Elementary School.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine, G, approve Casey's Cash for Classrooms Grant in the amount of $15,000 for West High School.
Motion by Ms. Spike, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine, H, approve Walmart Community Grant in the amount of $1,000 for West Haven Elementary School.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine, I, approve Fiber Art Now Teacher Excellence Grant in the amount of $300 for Whittle Springs Middle School.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten, approved memorandum of understanding with East Tennessee Freedom Schools for Provision of Summer Programming for KCS Students for a Term of One Year which may be extended for Four Additional Years.
Sub motion by Reverend Butler and a second by Ms. Owen. And before we get into discussion in public forum, Board members, I'd like to have board discussion first on this because I've been talking with Mr. Dupler and the superintendent and Dr. Wilson. We've had several conversations about this week because there's been some things that have changed kind of or been brought to light as far as some of the legal questions about it. And first of all, I want to be very clear that for the public, because I think there's some misconceptions out there, we are not voting on whether Freedom Schools can exist or operate. That's not what this is about. They've been operating for years in our facilities. We have 8,000 facility requests a year, I believe, Dr. Adams, you said? We process yearly? A lot of outside organizations do summer programs, and so this is not a vote on whether the merits of the program or whether the program exists or doesn't exist. I mean, I think that it's well-established. So what's before the board, it's before the board for two reasons. One is an MOU for data sharing, which parents opt into. We don't just randomly share data with other organizations. Parents have to choose. And in this case, like many other ones, from talking to Ms. Dean, it sounds like they can evaluate the merits of their program because it's very, it's a literacy-focused program. And the other reason is for transportation, because we did have buses in these neighborhoods going to these schools. After several conversations with Mr. Dupler and Superintendent Ryswick and Dr. Wilson, there seems to be some concerns about the transportation piece in regards to curriculum and if that binds us to have to monitor their curriculum. And it's sounding like that is the case after talking to the Law Department. And to be honest, we do not have the resources or the structure to monitor outside organizations' curriculum, is my understanding, or the legal expertise. I don't know unless Mr. Dupler has that. So what would be the consequences of that if, let's say, someone deemed the curriculum didn't follow under state guidelines? Would that would basically compromise state funding? So there is an issue with transportation, and the other thing with transportation that's been kind of brought to light is other organizations that we partner with are now saying, well, maybe we can look into this for us, right? And we do not know what buses are going to have And we do not know what buses are going to have seats and what buses aren't. And then, are you going to get in a situation where it looks like you are doing something for one, but you might not have seats for the other? And so, for all of these reasons, and I am supportive of this MOU, but in, Mr. Dupler, maybe you can weigh in on it. I just feel legally that it might be in the district's best interest to pull the transportation piece out of it. Can you speak a little bit to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to say that I think the board missed an opportunity. I know the City Council, Kyle, Texas, dressed up in Star Wars costumes for today. So, I don't know, I don't know who was supposed to organize that, but y'all missed that.
That's the vice chair's responsibility. She's that kind of coordinator.
So, but beyond that, so, I'll just give a little bit of history about this, or at least what I know, which is this MOU came to our office, just like hundreds and hundreds of contracts come. Hey, take a look at this for the form and then, you know, is it in legal form or not? So, at face value, it was in legal form. But after Monday's discussion, we were, you know, I was asked to take a closer look at it. I know state legislators had reached out. I know that there were conversations with other state officials about, you know, concerns about a particular statute. And that statute is, I'm just, I want to make sure I get it right, forty-nine dash six dash ten nineteen. And the, some of the legislators, you know, mentioned that, hey, we feel like this could be a violation. And legally, what I can, I can say a few things about that. One is, this is a fairly new statute. I searched for cases, and I think Mr. Watson and I talked about this. I searched for, you know, precedent, either from appeals courts or the Tennessee Supreme Court, and there are no precedent. So, there's no court decisions on this particular statute. Again, it's fairly new. So, we don't have that piece, but at least there is the concern out there. And I can also tell you this, that this statute applies to, you know, the Knox County Board of Education and any other board of education, you know, in the state of Tennessee. So, if funds are being used from the LEA, which is this board, then the only one that stands to lose anything is the Knox County Board of Education. So, with those concerns, you know, you had asked me to create an alternative data-sharing agreement, which the board has, you know, several data-sharing type of arrangements. You know, they differ slightly from entity to entity, but that would not use any funds and would simply be a non-compensated agreement. So, that's where we are right now.
Ms. Owen.
Mr. Dupler, could you clarify the length of time the buses would be used?
Well, that might be something that Superintendent Ryswick might be better to answer. Again, I've been learning more about the inner workings. Again, I just looked at this agreement for the form initially. But since Monday, a lot of the substantive questions have been asked. So, I'll pass that. Dr. Ryswick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think the same kind of thing. Let me say this on behalf of the staff. I really think, again, with Ms. Dean and with our staff, everything was well-intended. I think, you know, ten months ago, we made a call to the community to say, we can't be everything for everybody. Who can come, who will come around and help us? I think, you know, Freedom Schools has been a six-year partner, working with students who go to Knox County schools and has been very successful in the community. And I think the way those conversations happened with staff members, we're just in conversation with Ms. Dean. To my knowledge, Ms. Dean didn't ask for the transportation. As we've looked into some of those, it was just a conversation that struck, that began talking about ways to, again, work with community partners and to make that happen. I do think the staff members who had that conversation had no intention to try to push anything outside of just trying to help an organization have access to more kids. I think even when that came before the board, even into Monday, that's still where we were, that this might be something that we could try to do. It was not a practice we'd had, but we always like to try different things to try to give kids more opportunities. I do think, again, in talking with Mr. Dupler and kind of looking through those things, the law that was passed that has certain content that can and can't be taught, and that's in our schools, we still viewed that as summer programming is not something that we, we don't police anyone's summer programming and the content that's in those. But as, you know, he has expressed, talking to different people, you know, if we are providing resource for, which could be seen as promoting any of those, we now fall under as a school system that, those same laws and rules. Again, that was not the staff's intent at all when that happened. I think they were just trying to try something out to try to give access to students for that. So, with that new information, I do think it puts a situation where, as a staff, I've talked with Dr. Wilson, and he may want to jump into that too. We have supervisors in things like social studies and English. They are trained in pedagogy, which is how to teach and how to be better and more effective teachers. They are not legal experts in interpreting how law applies to curriculum. Our, the way our curriculum works is the state does this for us. They pick the text based on the law. They give us a list then for a committee to choose off of. So, we don't, we've never had to address the issue of what is prohibited content and not. And we're not prepared as a staff to be able to do that. It would take some legal counsel on our side to make that happen. And so, I think those are things that have happened since Monday. Our clarity that could be seen as promotion by the district to provide transportation and then our inability to be able to do that. We're not positioned to do that. So, I think those are new things that have come to light as we have a better understanding of that situation. But I want to say again, Ms. Dean never asked for that. I think our staff was just trying to find a way to give students opportunities on a program that has meant a lot to a community.
Can I ask my question again? Sorry. I'm going to ask it in two pieces. How long is our summer program?
That's a good question, too. This is where I was going with that, Ms. Owen. Thank you. So, I got lost in my own thoughts. So, that was another thing as we looked into that. So, our summer program for our summer camp is four weeks long. And theirs is? And theirs is six weeks long. So, that was something as we look into the MOU as well, that there would, the thought was originally there would be kind of that time to be able to piggyback, if you would, for those four weeks. But there are two extra weeks. And again, no fault to Freedom Schools for having that. I think the way the MOU is written, it talks about the duration of their program, duration of our program. There was no talk about the two weeks in between that theirs is longer than ours. And I think that's something as we look closer at the MOU that's there as well.
Right. Thank you. I think as a board member, I was, my understanding was that it was the same length of time. And I think that's sort of what was presented on Monday, and, I mean, through no fault of theirs at all. So, knowing that it's a different timeline and knowing that our buses are contracted by Knox County schools, they could still contract with our same bus contractors, not at the same time, but they could contract a bus also and still have transportation to our schools, just not on the same buses, right?
Yeah, so, I think I'm going to answer your question right. So, tell me if I don't. So, we do have, and Dr. Adams may be able to speak to that. We do have other community partners who do actually contract. And I'm not a hundred percent sure, it's my, Dr. Adams. I don't know if they contract that through us with payment or they contract straight to the contractors. But I'll have you speak to that if you don't mind, please, Dr. Adams.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Ryswick, Madam Chair, and so on. So, basically, our other contractors, they partner with KEF, and so, they reimburse Knox County schools. So, to answer your question, I believe what you're asking is, can Freedom Schools reach out directly to our contractors to contract a transportation? The answer to that is yes. And when local agencies ask us to connect them with contractors, we certainly do that.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Reverend Butler.
So, understanding that because of the promoting of the buses, that Knox County schools would be promoting the Freedom Schools. So, then Knox County schools would be responsible for making sure that the Freedom Schools' curriculum met the state law.
That is my understanding from talking to Mr. Dupler. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, Reverend Butler. The way the MOU is worded, Reverend Butler, I mean, it's more of a partnership. It's school funds used for this purpose. And then, that's going to require that Knox County schools and this board have more oversight. And then, that's why the, you know, the legislators and, you know, and the state officials are speaking out.
So, the legislators put pressure on us to look at it that way? Or why was the legislators involved? I mean, why do legislators are involved with?
I'm sorry, Reverend. I'm sorry, Reverend Butler. Please, please, we do not want to ask you to leave, but we have to get through this conversation. It was my understanding, well, just to be honest, probably because a mass email went out telling everyone that we are partnering with.
Say that one more time. I didn't hear what you said.
So, probably, to answer your question, I'm just assuming they're involved because a mass email went out telling people in the community that we are partnering with this group. And they reached out to their state legislators and they gave feedbacks, what I am assuming. However, I can tell you the ones that I heard from did cite the law that Gary cited as well.
What is the state law's directive on how Knox County schools is supposed to make sure this happens? What does the law say?
It's a fairly lengthy statute. I mean, but it, but I'll read the starting paragraph. Says that, and again, this is forty-nine, six, ten, nineteen. An LEA, which is a board or public charter school, shall not include or promote the following concepts as part of a course of instruction or in a curriculum or instructional program, or allow teachers or other employees of the LEA or public charter school to use supplemental instructional materials that include or promote the following concepts. And then, it lists fourteen concepts. And then, it lists some exceptions.
Okay. But does it list how Knox County schools, since they're with a LEA, how we would have to make sure of that?
I think that's part of the problem that Ms. Christie and Dr. Ryswick are talking about. I mean, is that this law is not real specific. I mean, it's fairly general. There's not been, again, case law on this law. So, you know, our office might have to spend, you know, a long time researching this along with administration to try and come up with something. We may have to reach out to other professionals. So, I think the concern is that KCS, at this point, is not prepared to try to police this.
So, now, and I can have Ms. Dean come up. She's sent me the list, or she's sent me that information you just read from, and the fourteen items. She's looked through her list. I think even on Monday night, Ms. Horn mentioned one of the books that wasn't against the state law. So, you know, it doesn't sound like it's hard to determine if that is in fact true. But one of the things I'm seeing here is, we had some, and I'm going to use the word conflict, about whether or not we should have this organization. And now, we have a law that says that they can't get the needed transportation, one of those areas that we were talking about. And now, there's a law that says that we can't do it, and we don't have the means to meet the requirements of the law, when the law don't say what the requirements are. And also, that there's no indication that this organization is not already meeting the law. It's as assumption that they may not be. Then, I think about that there was also a law that said during the charter schools discussion that about, there was a concern about Title IX. But then, the applicant said that it wasn't a problem. And then, we said, well, we weren't concerned about being a problem, even though Title IX issue was there. And so, it just sounds like a double standard to me. It sounds like that you're applying something to this group that you hadn't applied to another group. And I'm not saying that's the case. I'm just saying that's what it sounds like to me. And I think if you had people who could respond without being put out, they would say it sounded like that to them, too. And so, my concern is, is that this is one of those legal things that, you know, puts us in a situation that we may not be able to do anything about. We just got to suck it up. And so, which is, you know, initially, I felt like it was a slap in the face. Now, I think it's a kick dirt in my face and slap me in my face. Can I do this, though? Can I have Ms. Dean come up to speak on this occurrence? Because she is representing the other party in the MOU. And see what her statements are about this. Is that fair?
Right. We can do that. But can I speak to your question about the Title IX, just from my perspective? Because I did vote for the charter school. You know, I'm not an attorney. I rely on the advice that we are given. And just from my perspective, you know, Mr. Dupler did discuss that with us or to a point where I was reasonably comfortable with that aspect of the charter school. It's not, you know, like I said, I, you know, I was supportive of this Monday. You know, I want to be fair. I mean, that's not what this is about to me. This is about the legal, the legality and, you know, my understanding is it's the burden is put on the local district, us, to make sure, once we have shared resources, to make sure that those state curriculums are followed. And we have not ever had anything in place to evaluate an outside organization's curriculum. We've never had reason to have that in place. And that was my understanding from talking to Mr. Dupler. Just answer that question. But I'm fine with Ms. Dean coming up and speaking to it.
But part of that question of mine as well is that we don't have a way that is designed for us to do it. And we do have people who have experience in Knox County schools of reviewing material because they review textbooks. And they, we're not talking about thousands of books. You know, we're talking about a book list for six weeks of.
Right. I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Ryswick, the curriculum that we review is, I mean, what we choose from is already chosen for us by the state. We, is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're correct. I think that's the difference here. And again, Dr. Wilson, you may want to speak to that if you want to, but how that process works. I'll pass that to you, but you're correct in what you're saying.
Yeah, just, and I think I spoke to that process a bit the other night. But again, as we adopt curriculum that are used in our classrooms, there are state panels and groups that are convened to assess those materials for alignment to the law, support for the standards, all of those pieces, certainly through high-quality instructional materials, additional pieces that go into those and requirements. And from those, we have local teacher panels that then convene to assess from those choices what we want to adopt here locally. So, when we think about the role we play at a district level and the expertise, I guess, of the academic team to then review and deal in those materials, by and large, we're reviewing things that are already curated and selected at the state level. And then, in the case of where we might have questions, which we do from time to time, around, say, texts that are available in a library or supplemental materials. that are available in a library or supplemental materials that a teacher may choose and can choose to use in their classroom, our pathways for that are defined in policy. And we are dealing in those moments grounded in curriculum that we've adopted and expectations around those standards and those pieces that drive the instructional outcomes for our programs. And then also, if we find ourselves in situations where, you know, something were not being done correctly, we're also dealing in situations where we have oversight and management of those personnel and employees that are actually engaged in that. So it's a very different position to operate from when you're talking about a curriculum that doesn't belong to us and a program that we don't run or manage with personnel that we don't run or manage to try to start from scratch, so to speak, when we think about building curriculum and curating a collection that belongs to someone else.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want Ms. Dean to come up, but just in one second. I know Mr. Butler asked for that. Mr. DuPore, is it, it's true that Freedom Schools on its own is not subject to that law, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding. I mean, this law specifically references an LEA, which is a school board or public charter school.
Okay. And you talked about how the law is not very clear. And the way I can read those first two sentences is that within the LEA, that it is not to include or promote within the LEA. I can also understand how it could be read outside of that. But what I'm hearing in this discussion is we have some thoughts about what the implications might be. But there is no definition in the law. There is no case law that says that if we provide buses to this organization, and should they be found to have broken this law or not be in compliance with it? Again, it would not affect them. It could potentially affect us. But we don't even know the answer to that question yet, whether or not they would or they would not. Ms. Dean, would you mind coming and speaking for just a moment? And I would love to hear, you were here on Monday night, and I know that you listened intently to some of the concerns from the board and some of the, just back and forth in the dialogue as we try to process this and nuance this. I'm wondering if you just have any thoughts to share out of that conversation? And then specifically, I know you've tried to look into this law since that night. I don't know how familiar you are with it before then. But also would love your thoughts on whether or not you believe Freedom Schools, not that you are subject to it, but that you would be, should you be subject to it?
Thank you. First thing I would say is when we had conversations with Knox County Schools over the past few months, number of months actually, we talked about three things in particular. One was expanding our availability to more scholars in the community, and that's why we're at Spring Hill this year. We talked about data sharing. And then I share with them the importance of transportation, because that was one of the biggest barriers to the families that wanted to participate in Freedom Schools. And I have to say, the conversation on Monday hurt to some extent, because there were assumptions made about what our program does and what it's about. And I would say unfounded, primarily because I think, I don't know how many of you have ever even attended a Freedom School session or even looked at our curriculum guide or anything of that nature. So when I looked at 49-6-10-19 and read through it, my husband and I actually, I mean, we checked off each one. And I'll just read some of them. The lawyer didn't read all of them, but just some. I really believe that Freedom Schools can easily abide by that law. Just as an example, we don't believe that because of one's race or gender, they are inherently superior, privileged, racist, sexist, or oppressive. We do not believe anyone should be discriminated against due to their race or gender. We do not believe one's moral character is determined by their race or gender. We do not believe any individual bears responsibility for past actions committed by others, regardless of their race or gender. When we went through all 14, that's just not how, that's not the Freedom School way. That's not how we roll. We're about, we have our own Freedom Schools kind of core beliefs, and some of them are about we have respect for the emotional, mental, physical, and spiritual safety of ourself and others. And we have beliefs, values, and practices that demonstrate the higher standards of honesty and integrity. I mean, we're trying to raise up, you know, children who can read, can think, be thoughtful, who can be good citizens, who can be effective members of the workforce. There's nothing anti about what we do in terms of that law.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I appreciate that. And I appreciate you taking the time to look at it. I know on Monday night, there were several books that were referenced as maybe suggesting that maybe Freedom Schools does believe some of those things. I think it's important to note for the board that there's actually no specific laws mentioned, books mentioned in that law. That law is significantly up for interpretation. And you're saying tonight that you believe that Freedom Schools is complete, in complete compliance with that. I think some of the other comments I know were made the other night is that Freedom Schools has an agenda because it's associated. I'm curious what this agenda is for anybody who maybe brought that up. Because when I heard that that night, I'm trying to figure out what is the agenda?
Was it an alternative?
Yeah, that's the alternative. So alternative to what? So what's the right agenda? And what's the one that we're concerned about? And there was no definition or specificity brought out about that. And that could be helpful, because if I were in your position, I would wanna know, what am I alternative to? And I think that should be called out, because I think it's important, irregardless of this bus contract. There was a lot of things that were said that had nothing to do with an MOU. It was really about elevated concerns about a group trying to influence a segment of our population in negative ways. I mean, that's what was being said.
Indoctrinating was the term.
Yeah, indoctrination was the term. So I don't know if any of the board members who spoke to that would be willing to speak to that. But I would love to know what the ideal ideology is and what is the alternative one that we're concerned about.
All right, well, before we move into that, I just wanna be clear on where I am. And that is, you know, I don't feel comfortable with our structures in place for this or any organization as far as monitoring an outside organization's curriculum when it comes to funding. So, and this is all I'm gonna say about it. You know, I was supportive Monday night. I will support the MOU minus the transportation piece. And that's really all I'm gonna say. Ms. Owen?
I also have one point of order, I'm sorry. I know that typically, we have public forum at the beginning of an item. And I know you suggested that we have board discussion first. But what I didn't hear is when will we have public forum?
Before we vote.
Before we vote?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanna make sure the question doesn't get called and all that things, because sometimes that happens. And I would love for the public to be able to speak to.
Well, if the question gets called, then we'll have public forum prior to that. But the motion now hasn't been changed. I mean, I'm just saying that.
No, I understand. I just, and I'm not saying, don't hear me wrong, Ms. Christie, I'm not suggesting that you were trying to avoid public forum.
No.
I'm just trying to understand, because it typically happens at the beginning, when do we intend to do it?
My intention with that was, I felt from my personal conversations with the law department.
To have more context, I get that.
That maybe people needed to have more context before they spoke at public forum.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
That was my only intent.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear for me when it is going to occur.
Right, it will, we will have public forum before the vote, as we always do. But right now, actually, I might need to make a substitute motion in case that happens. I believe the motion was to approve the MOU with a second, wasn't it? Is that the case? So Reverend Butler made a motion to approve it. And Ms. Owen, did you second it?
Yes.
Okay. So before we go any further, I would like to make a substitute motion to approve the MOU minus the transportation piece.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before you make, before that is seconded. I didn't hear from Ms. Dean being the party. Has she been talked to about the part about the change? Has she been, had that been discussed with her? Has she agreed to that? I mean, isn't our MOU, it's something that both sides agree to before it comes to us? Or do we, this is my question. Or do we, can we, do we vote on it first and then we offer it to her?
Well, I guess my thinking on that, Reverend Butler, was because of the timing of it, because summer is rapidly approaching. To do that, we would have to pull it off and it would delay it if we. Does that make sense if I'm?
Yes, but I'm still thinking that the MOU, the motion that I made was the MOU that had been agreed upon between Knox County Schools and East Tennessee Freedom Schools, correct?
Yes. And I don't have a second on my motion, so I can just withdraw it and we can leave it as is.
I'm just wanting to know, how do we do that? Because if we change it, then are we saying to her then she accept it as it is or not?
Mr. DuPore, can you weigh in on that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Reverend Butler. I've seen it done either way, Reverend Butler. I mean, sometimes, well, most of the time, it is, as you described, that both parties are aware of what's coming before the board, and then the board approves. But there have been times when, after a board has discussion, that something has changed. Then it becomes an offer to the other party, Freedom Schools in this case. And then Freedom Schools can accept or not.
Ms. Owen, I think you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we were talking about this bus piece from the perspective of the difference in time and the fact that the staff had somehow given us a very serious misrepresentation of how that was gonna work, I could understand this conversation. But that's not the conversation we're having. The conversation we're having makes no sense to me. The reason we don't have guidance on how to evaluate an outside group's curriculum is because this law doesn't have jack to do with evaluating anybody's curriculum except our own. That there is no case law, I think, really helps my point, because all we have is the law at its face. And at its face, what it says is an LEA or public charter school shall not include. And in that, it's talking about in our instructional program. This is not our instructional program. We are not promoting anything in our instructional program. We are not promoting anything in our curriculum. We are not allowing our teachers or our employees or any public charter school's employees to use supplemental instructional materials in our programs. This law is very specifically regarding the LEA's instructional program. And it's, I mean, I've seen plenty of laws that our legislators don't understand that they themselves passed. But to say that this law in any way would hold us to looking at something that is completely outside, I mean, so obviously outside of our instructional program that it's not even happening during the school year, that seems pretty ridiculous to me. They've already said that even if we were looking at this and considering this, they're well within it. We could also look at this and say, we also don't have a process or any guidance on how we would hold any of our charter schools to this. We would just trust that they would do it. But that still shouldn't matter, because this is specific to an LEA's course of instruction and curriculum, curriculum instructional program. This is not our instructional program that we're talking about. It's completely separate. This isn't something that should even be a consideration. Now, if we wanna talk about the fact that the timeline is different for the buses, that would make sense to have a discussion about. But it's just stupid to have a discussion about this part.
Ms. Bike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this could be a question for Garfield. What is the cost of the busing contract for our summer schools? Do you know, or is that a wrong question?
So technically, we have individual contracts with contractors. I can get you that figure.
Do you know if there's a difference? Would there be a difference? Are you depending on this MOU?
Yes.
For that? Do you know, could you get us numbers on what the difference would be?
Yes, and actually, it's, those were the S dollars as well. So that's a conversation for Ms. Emma Garn as well. So we can look at, when you say a difference?
The additional cost. If this MOU is approved with the bus?
So we can look into that? We do not pull those figures prior to any board approval, because that would be presumptuous on our part.
Sure. I'm also curious what the difference, so I know the difference technically between the contract that we had before and now is the busing and the data. But the way it was in previous years, would that leave us to the same liability or supposed liability? Maybe that's for Mr. DuPore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Bike, I think we touched on this Monday that there's numerous outside entities that go through the facility use procedure. And that's all they do. They just go through the facility use procedure. And if the schools aren't using it, then they pay for, you know, the janitorial staff and things of that nature. And then they use it on their own accord. So, I mean, there's no, there's no school funding or promotion of the activity.
So it's literally just because they're using the same busing contracts that would say that we are promoting this school?
That's the, that's the risk at this point, yes.
Have there previously been any complaints in the last six to seven years about this school made to us?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Bike. I'm not aware of any, but again, I'll say this. We, to Mr. DuPore's point, we don't have any jurisdiction over that. It's really a facility's use that they or any other organization could do. So there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be like a complaint structure back to the district, in other words. So it is family choice to go to that, just like there probably are, you know, 50 other organizations that run kind of summer programming. They could be using the facilities, Knox County Schools facilities as well. So they wouldn't, if they had those complaints, they probably would do that through Freedom School, not through, like, it wouldn't come back to our English supervisor or something like that.
Sure. Then I would just echo Reverend Butler in that if we're willing to risk a Title IX lawsuit for a charter school that's going to take millions of tax dollars, that why wouldn't we allow this risk based on their guarantee? I'm really, really confused on this. It's.
Ms. Bike, hold on just a minute. I'm gonna ask one more time respectfully that if we have to hear each other, and I'm hearing noise out there and it's conversation or something, it's distracting to me.
Yeah. I, yeah, I just, I'm just really confused on that one, that it's just this busing nugget. That's all I have.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes, to answer Mr. Watson's question about what I feel like is a concerning agenda, if you go to their website, on their homepage, they have an article about banned books we love. And those banned books are books that are, would fall actually, probably, most likely under that state law. And East Tennessee Freedom Schools has as its parent organization the Children's Defense Fund. And that defense fund clearly has a goal to promote banned books. Those books have content that I think create confusion among genders for children. And any gain of reading and literacy would be certainly offset, I believe, by this kind of content. They have books about, and they list some of those things, some racial division, sexual content, an LGBTQ agenda.
sexual content, um, an LGBTQ agenda. So those, those are the, the agenda that I feel like the Children's Defense Fund promotes, and, uh, the agenda I would like to see is one that is just clearly just about literacy. I don't know that you can get that through the Children's Defense Fund organization. I'm also not ignorant enough to think that, you know, we're, we are not, as, as Ms. Christie said, you know, voting to, for them to exist or not exist. They will continue to exist, uh, in the same way they have. I just believe personally that parents have trusted Knox County, and any sort of MOU, uh, in my mind is a partnership with them, and, um, I, I can't partner with an organization I believe that, that promotes these kind of things, that really at any level. You know, you may say, well, it's not a lot, or may or may not show up in these schools or in, in the Freedom Schools in East Tennessee, uh, but I cannot partner with an organization that promotes this kind of agenda.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Triplett, thank you for shedding some light on what you referenced the other night. I wasn't sure what blog post that was. So the, the blog post that you're referring to, um, when you talk about issues of race and racism, LGBTQI issues, um, and sexual encounters, you re, you do realize that what they're referencing is just a catalog of books that are banned across the US. They're not saying that all of their books have that percentage of those different issues. Do you under, you understand that piece, correct?
I do.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is because you've referenced that several times as being the concern. All they're saying is across America, Penn America, has tried to catalog the issues in all banned books across America. What CDF is not saying in that blog post is, we endorse all these books. That's not what they're saying, if you read the blog post. Now, they do have a list of books that they do endorse that's separate from that, and I'm curious, I'm not familiar with all the titles, I'm curious if, if you're aware of those titles, or do you have concern with those specific titles?
I do, I'd have to, I, I looked through some of them, and some of that content is, is there. There is an LGBT, LGBTQ content in, in, in that list of books.
Okay. Mr. Triplett, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but you do understand that we have LGBTQ kids across our district. Do you understand that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm well over that.
And, and I'm not, um, I'm not, I'm not in any way wanting to date faith or your values or your beliefs or whatever, but I think when we get to the point where you're saying you're going to make this decision based upon your personal beliefs and your personal values about something that you think may be occurring, but you don't know if it's occurring or not. And, I mean, rarely do I engage with anybody that I fully agree with them. I mean, there's, rarely would, would that be the case. But there's a lot of other things that would speak to me about a positive agenda. I mean, Mary, Mary Ann Wright Edelman is actually still alive, I mean, the founder of CDF, and a couple of things that she's said over time that I really appreciate. She says, "When Jesus Christ asked little children to come to Him, He didn't say only rich children or white children or children with two-parent families or children who didn't have a mentor or physical handicap. He said, 'Let all the children come.'" I appreciate that agenda. She also said, "Parents have become so convinced educators know what is best for children that they forget that they themselves are really the experts." We've talked a lot about parental choice, parental choice the last couple of weeks, which I also appreciate. She also says, "Education is for improving the lives of others and for leaving your community and world better than you found it," and I can get down with that, too. Uh, she also says, "Service is the rent we pay to be living. It is the very purpose of life, not something you do in your spare time." And when I see Freedom Schools, that's what I see. I see people who, for way more than it's existed in East Tennessee, who has looked at a group of children who have been underrepresented, um, that have been historically oppressed, again and again, having to fight, uh, for a little scrap of something. And my concern is that we in the positions of power would say to them, "But you don't get this scrap." And I know that nobody is saying this directly, but we do understand that we are talking about black children on buses. Right? I mean, that's really what helped elevate and kick off the civil rights movement. And Mr. Triplett, out of due respect, I know that's not what you're saying, but that's what this community is hearing. That is what they're hearing. And at some point, I want that community, I want this community to hear the people in positions of power standing up for them and not succumbing to legislators who hear about a consent agenda item on a Knox County Board of Education and get riled up and start rallying the, the wagons about what we should or should not do on this board. That's my concern. And I've walked in this community with Denise Dean for five years, and this woman has no agenda, other than giving the children that she gets to interact with the very best, and wants them to be giving the very best back to their community. And the other thing that I know is there's people in leadership in this district who have come through Freedom Schools, and I'm not going to out them, I'm not going to put their names out there, but they're damn good at what they do. And they love children. And I'm not trying to get all whatever, but, because I do, I feel like what you're saying is authentic. Like, I get what you're saying. I totally understand, um, that, that's the journey you've been on and you've gotten to this place. But what I'm asking you to do is I'm asking you to look at the community and saying, "Yeah, but even though that's not my journey, they're asking for something here." And nobody's asking you to sign on the dotted line and become a board member of CDF. Nobody's asking you to do that.
Is it okay if I respond to that, Ms. Christie? Or is there somebody else ahead of you?
Ms. Pike is ahead of you. Um, if she wants to defer.
I would be fine with him responding, and then I'll go.
Okay.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, and I, I do understand, um, there's a community that we serve and people we serve and people that need help. I, I would agree with all of that. I'm a fan of literacy. I think anything we can do to promote literacy is good and valuable. I, I speak no ill will towards those that are involved in Freedom Schools or work for Freedom Schools or have come through Freedom Schools, use the Freedom Schools, attend the Freedom Schools. I've got, but nothing, no ill will and nothing negative to say about them. I, I don't believe that, um, I don't believe I've, I've said anything negative about them individually in particular. I just know that the parent organization that oversees them is not something I can support, and, um, by her own admission Monday, it was that she gets her curriculum from them. And I, I, I don't believe that I can support, support that, that agenda. That's all I got.
Ms. Pike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Ms. Dean. Is that? Thank you. I understand that, um, you're working directly with some of these children, and I'm curious how you would approach it if a child felt uncomfortable about some curriculum or a book that they were reading?
Would you talk back and see what the discomfort was?
Have you, has that happened? Have, have you encountered that before?
Not, no, not, they may not have liked it.
Yeah, well, that, that, they're kids.
But they weren't uncomfortable or felt, um, out of sorts in any way.
Do you feel like you and the adults, um, that are in the rooms with these children have the capacity to judge when a child is uncomfortable and to redirect?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
Reverend Butler?
So my question, well, is the question, yes, my question is, um, if we don't have a pass, process that's determined for us to use for outside organizations, and if we determine that the process is, is that we look at the curriculum, and if it violates any of those 14 tenets, then we would say, "Okay, you can't use that particular book." Would that be a legitimate way of determining? Because that's what, uh, Ms. Dean has said that she's done. So that, would that be a legitimate process? Legally, would that be a legal process? Because it's not one that's there.
All I can say Reverend Butler is, is, perhaps, I mean, again, there's no, I, I've got the same.
Right, you got the same thing I have.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so I mean, I can't.
And that's what I'm saying is that.
I don't know that I can answer that question. I mean, I mean, I think if, if the board votes for this MOU, then, then I, then KCS administration is going to have to come up with something to have some oversight. I mean, you know, do I know exactly what that looks like? No.
So, yeah, and I think part of what I remember now is that, when, when we talked about the Title IX issue, and there was a concern from a number of people, um, maybe not a number of people on this board, but a number of people. And, um, I think the applicant said that they would take care of it, they would handle it, it'd be on them, and although we know if it's on them, it's on us, that we were comfortable accepting that risk, because it, it, there's a risk there, and we, we became comfortable. Am I missing that? Did we not become comfortable with that risk? Am I missing that? Nobody's saying nothing.
I believe the option we were also given was that, you said that it could close, right? I mean, that's the other option for a Title IX lawsuit, is not just building another facility, but you could, you could close down the exit, the one that the complaint was over, right?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So if there's a complaint that comes against this, then we can stop the, stop the, uh, MOU, because what, uh, page four, item number four, on page four said that they would comply with all federal, all state laws and regulations, and I may have in my mind put local in there as well. So if that's the case, that's already in the MOU. They've already said that we're going to comply with this law, and they, and, and they've gone the extra mile to make sure that they're complying with the law. Let me just say this. We have, uh, a community, uh, and, and it is, um, at two District One schools, and I think one is, 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 is it that in District Two? And one, one is in District Two. All having, two in District One are on the state's bottom five list. They have literacy issues. This is a summer literacy program. Did we say that it doesn't cost Knox County Schools any money? None. We're not asking, they're not asking for money. So we understand, and I, and thank you, uh, Ms., Ms. Christie for saying that, "Okay, I can support the data sharing." The data sharing is important, because that helps the school, uh, do the best job they can and know if they're doing the best job they can, know what they need to do better. And also, I think it does, it can over time give Knox County Schools an opportunity to see what's going on, how they can better utilize the relationship. And they have, uh, a data-based, uh, or they've used data to get to, to show that they've been successful over the last seven years of, of either maintaining or improving student learning from, uh, keeping the student learning from the end of school year to the beginning of school. They, they've proven that. They've, they've had 90% or above a couple of years, 100% parent satisfaction. So it's not the parents who are going to complain, it's not the students who are going to complain. They have community-based support from churches, from community nonprofits. The, when we finally get to talk here, here from the public, there's a number of people here that have been in support of and working with, and these are people who are not, don't have an alternative agenda. This school doesn't have an alternative agenda. This school has one agenda, and that is literacy for schools. There are other byproducts, and so even with the buses, you're not paying any more money. Now, we know it's four weeks. You're not paying any more money in four weeks than you would be paying. And I don't know what the answer is for the two weeks, because I think we just found that, that there was a two-week difference in the last day or two. So, so that can be worked out. This is a win-win. I believe that's why I was on the consent agenda, because it's a win-win. And I think the only reason these state legislators got involved, quite honestly, this is what I think, I can't prove this, I hesitate to say it, but it, it's because they, it was a leverage deal to, to say, "Hey, you, you got to make sure you can pass this, you can pass the muster of this law if you want to do this." And, and so otherwise, we wouldn't be having this discussion. But even with that, I believe that there's a question, uh, there's, there's a, a little gray area of when we are promoting and when we're not. There's a gray area there, you know? And, uh, there's a gray area on what the procedure should be. And so we're concerned about that, but I know I'm not the only one who think that was a gray area with the Title IX. We just as a board, and I say we because we passed it, we as a board felt like that was a risk we could take. This is a risk we can take. Seven years of 100% or 90% satisfaction of parents. They're the ones, now, this is what's key to me, though. This school serves primarily East Knoxville kids. It may be some kids from other areas, but primarily East Knoxville kids. And it has been serving and it's going to continue serving. And it's almost like you're saying, "We're concerned it's going to affect our kids." It's not. The people who've been going there have already been going there. So the concern you have about this thing, we've been fixed that. When, I, I said this as clear as I could. You have people with high intelligence, you have people with high moral standards, and when we have something that concerns us, we speak up and we talk to one another, and it gets resolved. And the other thing is, is that I'm going to go, uh, piggyback off what, uh, Mr. Watson said. Not only do we have students, we have teachers in Knox County that, uh, that's part of the community that you have talked about, and you have constituents. And so I don't know, the, 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 the things we're talking about are things that we're already talking about. There's not nothing new. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that the, uh, the MOU as it's written works for East Knoxville. It works, can't speak for District Two, but I think it, I know, I know Spring Hill. I've been at Spring Hill several times, been to several Spring Hill, uh, sh, uh, school plays and such, because I've had members of the church that go there. So, so it fits their community as well. I, I have two, two people, two kids, that's a member of the church that goes there. I've been there to visit them at Spring Hill. It, this, this works for them. Freedom School works for us, and, and, and I'm not saying it's not for you, but you're not utilizing it. Why not let us have what we need to keep on trying to increase the literacy for our kids? That's what's needed. And when you add the buses, you expand it to more kids. This is not a danger to us, unless someone outside of East Knoxville makes it a danger. This is not a danger. This works for us. So if somebody said to me, "If you bring me something that makes sense, not going to cost a lot of money, it improves education," that I would vote for it. And that's what we got here. This is a win for the East Knoxville, and I really believe it's a win for Knox County Schools.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a little bit of discussion about this law when it came to setting our priorities, because, um, and ultimately, the board voted to send a message to the legislation that, "Hey, we really appreciated what you, what you did with this law." And maybe that's why they're calling us, because they wanted to give us kudos back. But, um, this law, the reason I voted no, um, that particular night, is because the whole, this whole law is couched in fear. That's what this law is about. It's a, it's about people being afraid about, um, other people being told to, uh, for white kids to being told you should be, feel bad about yourself, or... you should be, feel bad about yourself, or that black kids are going to be told that you shouldn't like white kids because they oppress you, or you shouldn't, don't say gay, and all those types of things. This law is based in fear, and some of this conversation has been based in fear about indoctrination. I had a person that I have known for 20 years in this community. That, his, his kids were actually in the youth group that I ran when they were younger. And he emailed me today, and he said, and he doesn't live anywhere near East Knoxville, and he said, "I'm afraid of how this is going to affect my grandkids." That's what he said. I'm not making this stuff up. That's what he said. He said, "I'm afraid of how this is going to affect my grandkids," and we had a little dialogue about that. One, he's never going to enroll his kids in this program. I guarantee you that. But that's, that's the bigger problem with this whole conversation. Even the risk that we're talking about, it's couched in fear. It's about, ooh, what might the legislature do to us? And I don't want to operate out of fear. And that's so much of what's happening in our culture today, is we're making decisions, and we're making decisions from the seat of power, couched in fear. And when we do that, it affects those that it's been affecting for generations. And honestly, I don't know if Ms. Dean would appreciate me saying this or not, but Ms. Dean actually told me a while, a little bit ago that this was going to be coming up, and she just told me that, hey, I'm going to have this thing, and I'm going to come to the meeting. I said, "Great." I said, "I think you should be there." And I messaged her earlier in the day on Monday to say, "Hey, Ms. Dean, when you, when you do come, would you like me to call you up so you could speak in support of Freedom Schools?" Because it was on the consent agenda. Like, I thought nobody was going to say anything. I was just asking her permission to call her up so she could, like, just speak to the beautiful program that she's been operating for six years because, and I've done that several times. Y'all have seen me do that with other people, Ellie Kitchell and others, because I want them to speak about the good work that they're doing. I mean, I could not fathom that a program like this that has these kinds of, I'm in the nonprofit world, and we care a lot about output and outcomes and being able to speak to the efficacy of what we do, you're not going to get this level of outcomes in many other organizations. We don't see these level of outcomes around literacy in our own organization, in Knox County schools. That's because we're dealing with a massive system. I know it's a completely different scale, but they do good work. And regardless of what happens with this decision, as a board, as a community, as people in the, this particular group and people of positions of power, we have to move beyond operating out of fear. I guarantee you, there's going to be some public forum speakers up, that are going to, that are going to come up here in a little bit, and they're going to speak out of fear. I guarantee you, that's going to happen. I don't know who they're going to be, but they're going to be there. And that's not what we need to be doing because when we are afraid of one another, it's very hard to move forward as a community. And, and I'm so disappointed in this conversation. I mean, I'm just disappointed, and it's not about no frickin' buses. It's just.
Ms. Ellen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of things. First, I have reached out to some of our local band directors because they have, they know bus costs for that kind of short period of time, and they are looking at around $250 to $300 a day for a local, local, like, traveling tube from Karnes to Gibbs, that kind of football game. And so if we are looking at two weeks of time, the additional time it would take, it would be roughly $9,000 or less for three buses, which is, to put that in perspective, it's roughly the amount of our school board raise that we got this year. So I would like to, since Reverend Butler kindly mentioned Spring Hill, I would like to share an email that we all have, that we may not have had time to read today from our principal at Spring Hill Elementary. It says, "Our summer learning camp has prioritized enrollment for our rising fourth graders." I'll wait. "Our summer learning camp has prioritized enrollment for our rising fourth graders due to the third grade retention law. Freedom Schools stepped up to offer more programs to schools like Spring Hill with high-projection numbers of students needing summer intervention. They are extending a helping hand to soften the blow of additional summer learning gaps by hosting the program at our school and offering to enroll students who won't be eligible to attend the summer, summer learning camps through KCS. As a community school, we are grateful when the community reaches out when they see a need. I was honored to work with Freedom School when it first came to Knoxville. I became a better teacher after the intense training they provided each year for their teaching staff. Now, as an administrator, we begin our school day with our students coming together for morning assembly, which is something I learned from the Freedom School. We're building a school culture at Spring Hill where we come together daily to learn from and support one another. Offering Freedom School at Spring Hill will strengthen our efforts, the efforts we began, and push our students to become better readers and overall better people. I hope we move forward with Freedom Schools so they can continue empowering our students through the love of reading." Why on earth would we not do that?
All right. So do we have any other discussion on this? Reverend Butler?
I do ask, can we have the public forum, and then after that, if there is, we can see where we go from there?
Yeah, so once our discuss, it looks like our discussion is complete, so we can move to public forum on this item. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several people signed up for this. First, Dr. Andrew Steen. Are you here, Dr. Andrew? Hello, welcome. Please just state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Andrew Steen. I live in Knox County and have a couple of kids in the schools here. I'm also a professor in the Departments of Microbiology and Earth and Planetary Sciences at the University of Tennessee, and I'm asking the school board to approve the MOU. Like most researchers, I love to share my passion for science, not only with UT students, but also with anyone who wants to learn, and particularly with K-12 students. And what I love about science is the thrill of discovering the unknown. When we make a new scientific finding, there's a moment when we, as researchers, know something that no one else on Earth knows, and that feeling is electrifying, and I can tell you from experience, it never gets old. So for two years, Dr. Joy Bonjourno, who's here tonight from Maribor College, and I have been collaborating with East Tennessee Freedom Schools to involve the ETFS scholars in authentic science research. So by involving middle schoolers in real-life science, my hope is to teach them how exciting science can be. That experience will hopefully lead the ETFS scholars to be more invested in their STEM classes as they enter high school, and perhaps to pursue STEM careers as they become adults. Educational research supports the idea that when students participate in science research, they're more likely to maintain positive attitudes about STEM, and that stands to reason because doing science research can be a lot of fun. In a previous iteration of this project, in which I worked with high school students in New Jersey, led to over 60 high school students presenting their research at real professional science meetings. One of those students was accepted at Harvard, and she was the first student in memory from her high school to attend an Ivy League university. ETFS is a really great partner for this work for two reasons. First of all, in my experience, ETFS scholars are highly motivated to learn. Second, and this is critical, they're also learning reading and comprehension skills that are essential to doing STEM work. So the reality is that a budding scientist who is driven to read widely and understand well is more likely to be successful in STEM than somebody who just knows a lot of science facts. Research and also common sense suggest that the best way to get students invested in reading is to encourage them to read works that they relate to personally. The ETFS curriculum does that extremely well, and I can attest that it does not in any way violate the ideas listed in Section 49-6-1019. ETFS scholars are, being able to take school buses to the program will be tremendously helpful in making sure that all scholars who might benefit from the program can take part. This MOU represents an excellent way for Knox County schools to help Knox County students learn both reading and STEM outside of the traditional classroom, and for that reason, I hope that you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next, our next speaker is from out of county, or out of Knox County, so we'll have to vote on that, correct? Okay. Yes, correct. What's that? Yes, Ms. Susan, and I'm so sorry, I'm going to butcher your last name. Ms. Susan is what I will call you. So since you live out of Knox County, we'll just have to vote. No, you stand right there. You stand right there. Come on up.
So I'll make a motion that we vote on this speaker.
I second.
Okay.
All those in favor of letting Ms. Susan speak, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I shouldn't have done that. I'm sorry.
That's fine. You're good. I kind of like you taking over. Why don't you, you can be, you can be chair.
All those opposed? Okay, Ms. Susan, just state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Dr. Susan Granke. I am a resident of Sevier County. I am a professor of English education at the University of Tennessee, where for the past 18 years, I've helped prepare over 200 beginning middle school and high school English language arts teachers. I say that because I am very, very familiar. I have to be very familiar with the Tennessee law on prohibitive concepts because we have partnership with Knox County schools, and all of our students are required to do a year-long internship in Knox County schools, and so we, we train them on that law. Prior to starting my career at the university, I taught middle and high school English and went to graduate school to obtain my PhD in curriculum and instruction. I have had the honor to work as a curriculum writer for the Children's Defense Fund Freedom Schools program, and I can attest that the curriculum is rigorous. It is standards-based, and it does not violate Tennessee law. The curriculum is centered on the theme of "I can make a difference." So each week of the six-week program, the children read books that encourage them to think about how they can make a difference in their own lives, their communities, their families, and the world. The children's book themselves are carefully selected and vetted each year by a committee of university professors, school media specialists, community stakeholders, and members of the prestigious Coretta Scott King Honor Book Award Committee. As expressed at the meeting on May 1st, parents of the children who participate in this program are familiar with the curriculum, they support the curriculum, and they express satisfaction with the Freedom Schools program. For the past six years, this program has run for Knox County schools' children without a single complaint from parents. In fact, popularity of the program is such that additional sites to accommodate programming are needed as is easy access to these sites. If Knox County schools' parents' rights are important to members of this board, let's keep that in mind. Let's also keep in mind what research tells us about who has access to engaging reading materials over the summer and who doesn't. We know that students in underserved communities have less access to reading material at home than their more advantaged peers do. Researchers have found roughly 10 times greater access to reading material in higher-income neighborhoods than in lower-income neighborhoods. There is no Barnes &amp; Noble, or Target, or Union Avenue Books, or other commercial bookstores in East Knoxville, and the Burlington branch of the Knox County Public Library is located on a highway. Here we have a popular program that wants to bring award-winning books and high-quality reading curriculum to the most.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry.
Vulnerable youth in our district. I urge you to vote yes to Freedom Schools.
Thank you. Erin Keck. You've signed up for two. Would you mind?
I'll split my time.
Okay, great.
Erin Keck, Knox County. I am also a parent representative on the Region Five Family Advisory Council, which the Freedom Schools is directly in. I appreciate the, being selected for that group, and us parents have put in a lot of hard work trying to coordinate the strategic plan specifically for Region Five. We were told that Region Five is going to get lots of support, so I would hope this vote would be part of that. Do you want to know why I'm here every month, why you guys see me here month after month? The reason that I'm here every month is because I care. I care about Knox County schools. I care about public schools. I care about my community. I'm a graduate of Knox County schools. I'm a parent of a child in Knox County schools. I've served on any parent-community committee that I've been allowed to serve on. I'm an educator and have been for over 20 years. And I believe that, like a board member has stated tonight, I am blown away that this conversation is even happening. There, there is no reason for any board member to vote against the Freedom Schools. You have selected Dr. Reiswick as your superintendent. Your faith is in him and his priorities. If you vote against this, you are saying you don't care about the success for every student. You don't care about the early foundational skills, because this program has proven that they complete both of those requirements. They assist the children in my community that desperately need it. Last month, we heard a lot about parent choice, the hypocrisy, the hypocrisy of saying only certain parents and only certain choices. These parents have given 100% satisfaction. That is a parent choice that they have made. You don't have to send your kid there, but don't take it away from these people. I hope that at least one of you guys actually ran for school board because you care about the children and you care about what's happening. Even those of you that I strongly disagree with most of the time, I've seen you do the right thing, so I hope you'll do it tonight. I saved my last minute for the other agenda.
Thank you. Vivian Shite. Vivian? Ms. Vivian? I know, you know the, you know the drill. Welcome.
Vivian Shite, 503 Longview Road, Knoxville, Tennessee 37919. Good evening. Tonight, you will vote on a MOU for the Freedom School that will make the learning experiences of children in the inner city much easier over the coming summer months. The key word to the success of this next level of collaboration is focus. There is much minutia swirling around this decision. However, you only have two items on which to focus. One, to provide for children who have no other way to get the help they need, a seat on the bus that is already going to the place where their needs can be met. The second, to data-share, to see where the children stand scholastically and to share that data to allow those who have been doing this work successfully for seven years the opportunity to improve the children's skills and help them retain knowledge that children all over the country are losing due to summer slot. I ask you to focus only on these two items. I ask you to give Freedom Schools the opportunity to show you what the community they serve already knows. Children put down their phones and pick up their books and want to learn. They put down a phone that already shows if anything they want to see, good and bad, at the touch of a finger or at the sound of their voice. Instead, at the Freedom School, they turn their focus to a teacher who wants to be there with them in the hot summer days. They listen to community members who volunteer to come in to do activities and read to them, sharing the most precious thing they can offer: their time. Generation Alpha is 13 and under. They only know technology. They socially interact with devices majority of their time. Here in the Freedom School programs are opportunities to physically occupy space with another human, to learn how to communicate, to fall in love with reading, to see and experience a world outside of theirs, to learn, to lose all of their senses, to go back into the fall session more confident, not lagging behind, ready to learn the new skills of the new grade level they have moved to without playing catch-up for the first half of the year. So tonight, look neither left nor right. Choose not to look too far down the road to the next MOU. Tonight, focus on what is needed for those children in one of the most critical times in our education history. If you will focus tonight on just these two items, they will be able to focus this summer. If you will focus tonight on just these two items, they will be able to focus this summer. I ask you to vote yes on the MOU for the Freedom Schools.
Thank you. Kenneth Herring? Kenneth? Is Kenneth here?
Yes.
Welcome.
Hello.
Just state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Kenneth Herring, and I'm a resident of Knox County, and I live here in the downtown area. First of all, Susan, where's Susan? Susan, thank you so much for your time. Danny, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you all speaking with me about the matter. I come to you today as a former Freedom School counselor. As a matter of fact, I was a Freedom School counselor in 1999, the first year that Freedom School kicked off. And I've heard a couple of words today that have really struck a nerve with me, and those being fear and honesty. And I think if we're going to be honest, then we need to talk about several different elements of this, several of which have been talked about today. I think the most challenging thing that we can look at this and say and take from is we have an opportunity right now to invest in young people, and we're trying to fight it. And the reason that we're trying to fight it is that there's fear. And I'm going to say what Daniel alluded to and kind of talked about earlier, and the fear is that if Black and Brown children are exposed to American history, that white parents are fearful that their children will hate them. And that's what we're talking about today. And once again, as has been the process throughout American history, Black and Brown people are forced with the burden of ending division and racism, which is asinine. It's crazy. It's never benefited us. We've never gained anything from it. So for us to be asked to make sure that we don't make people feel uncomfortable, to be asked to make sure that we don't let our children have a space where they can learn and be together and grow, is a continuation, and it's a disenfranchisement of students that you have an opportunity to help, and you're choosing not to do it. And I understand, I run a business, so I understand working with unions, I understand budget constraints, I understand things that you can and can't do. And I also understand when you use policy and legislation as a way to not do something that you should do, as a way to not invest in people that you should invest in. These are children who are already struggling. These are children who already are facing barrier after barrier. And here we sit, all of us, privileged enough to be here, and yet the thing that we're talking about is how we could not help them, instead of how we can help them. The attitude of "not" is really, really detrimental to children who already don't have a lot. As I sit here today and stand and talk to you, I had seven Freedom School counselors that went through that program with me in 1999. Two of them, on this very day, teach in Knox County schools. One of them is an administrator. So the ideology and the thought process that there's harmful rhetoric, that there's harmful words, that there's harmful things that are going on, is not true, because the people that have gone through that program are leading our students right now.
Megan, Megan Barrelit Fogarty? Welcome.
Good evening, Megan Barrelit Fogarty, I'm a Knox County resident. My name is Megan Barrelit Fogarty, I'm Director of Youth and Family Engagement at Centro Hispano de East Tennessee, another of KCS's partners. We run after-school programs, summer enrichment camp, parent education, family engagement, and college access programs for Latino families in Knox County and the surrounding region. I'm also a parent of two Knox County students. I'm here speaking in support of the East Tennessee Freedom Schools. This is a program that I've been aware of for at least the last five years in my work with education in our region. I was so impressed by the program's curriculum and guiding values that I have repeatedly sought every opportunity to meet with and collaborate with the program's director. Ms. Dean and I served together on several local advisory boards that seek to improve educational outcomes for all children in Knox County. What most attracted me to an East Tennessee Freedom Schools is the emphasis on culturally relevant materials, and educators that come from shared experiences and backgrounds of the students that they are working with. These reflect similar strategies that we utilize in our programs at Centro Hispano. These strategies are important because research has shown that utilizing culturally relevant texts in which readers can see themselves and their experiences reflected leads to greater engagement and literacy outcomes among students from underrepresented groups. Freedom Schools also works hard to recruit staff with shared experiences with their students. This is particularly important in our district, which has struggled to attract and retain teachers of color. The Knox County student population currently is seventeen percent Black and twelve percent Hispanic, and yet only three percent of teachers identify as African-American, and just over one percent of teachers identify as Hispanic or Latino. Why does this matter? Well, multiple studies have shown that having educators that look like and have shared cultural backgrounds with students can have long-lasting positive impacts on their academic outcomes. For example, an economically disadvantaged black male's exposure to at least one Black teacher in elementary school reduces his probability of dropping out of high school by nearly forty percent. Unfortunately, the chances that Black male students in Knox County schools will encounter a Black teacher in their elementary school are very small. However, participation in East Tennessee Freedom Schools helps supplement these experiences by utilizing educators that are much more likely to reflect the diversity of students they are working with. The attacks on East Tennessee Freedom Schools are perhaps most perplexing to me, because they come at a time when Knox County schools are struggling to meet the needs to address literacy scores in its students, particularly in the exact populations that Freedom Schools specializes in serving. In the last DOE report card, only nineteen percent of Black students and twenty-two percent of Hispanic students are meeting or exceeding grade-level expectations in literacy and math. This week, we've heard that Knox County schools cannot meet the needs for all the, all the students that have been needed to go to summer learning camps. So it doesn't make any sense to me why KCS is turning students away from summer learning supports, but our own school board members are attacking organizations that prepare to provide additional literacy support for these students. For the past three years, we've heard about how we need to come together to help our students.
Thank you.
This organization is trying to do that and trying to support Knox County schools, and it doesn't make any sense to not support them.
Thank you. Reverend Leah Burns?
My name is Reverend Leah Burns, I'm the pastor at Lenin Ceni United Methodist Church. And you will have to vote on me, I am a former resident of Knox County, but I live in Anderson County, so please vote so that I can speak.
So I'll make a motion to approve this speaker.
I second that motion. All those in favor of the speaker?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you very much for listening to my words and the words of all who will speak tonight. As I said, I'm Reverend Leah Burns, and I'm from Lenin Ceni. And before I get started, I came to speak on behalf of supporting the MOU for the Freedom Schools that I dearly love. But before I do that, I want to start with one of the things that we say at the beginning of each day during Freedom Schools. If you're familiar with Freedom Schools, you know that there are energetic cheers, there are chants, there are songs to get children ready for the day. And one of the things that they say is, "I have a recognition. I have a recognition. I recognize the great value that Freedom School has, in particular, for all the children in East Knoxville. They have access to books, they have access to experiences, they have access to learning during the summer months, they have access to breakfast and lunch that they do not get." And so why are we standing in the way of what we are to do? The quote that you already heard today is the quote that I was prepared to share with you all today from Marian Wright Erleberg, but it's worth repeating. When Jesus Christ asked the little children to come to Him, He didn't say "only certain children." He didn't say "the children whose parents agree with what I think." He didn't say "only the children in two-parent families that I recognize," or "only the children who don't have mental or other physical handicaps." He said, "Let all the children come to Me." We have an opportunity with the Freedom Schools to do that. And all I've heard, all I've read, is how people want not to provide it. I know that there are smart people in this room, here and here. We can put our heads together and figure this out. We've got a law before us that few people even understand. We have a, we don't even have a process for dealing with it. And so I say, why let any of those things get in the way of helping our children? Get in the way of helping them be the adults that they know, that we know they can be? And so I ask, no, actually, I'm imploring you. I implore you, as a board, don't impede the, the future of our children and the future of our community. This is a risk, yes, but it's a risk that we have to take. And so I end with how I started. I have a recognition, and it's called Freedom Schools.
Denise Dean? Denise Dean? Oh, and we will have to, no, come on up. But we will have to vote on you as the speaker, just because you do live out of the county.
Yes. Denise Dean, Jefferson County.
I'll make a motion to approve this speaker.
I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good, good evening. This time, I'm reading, just sharing a letter from a parent. I think you may have received it as well. The Children's Defense Fund East Tennessee Freedom School Summer Program is a six-week-long summer enrichment program with three hours of reading per day. The program helps children fall in love with reading and increases their self-esteem, cultivates positive attitudes toward learning, and reduces summer reading loss. According to the 2022 assessment, the data shows that eighty-four percent of children improved or maintained their instructional reading level. A hundred percent of parents say their child is a better reader, has more confidence, and believes they can make a difference in their community, schools, and society. As a member of the community and a parent of a Knox County school student, my son has been in intervention reading at school, and with the additional help he received from East Tennessee Freedom School Summer Program, has helped him increase his reading level and become confident in his studies. He loved the program because he was exposed to the history of his culture and other cultures. He learned about different cultures through reading, songs, instruments, and other things that raised awareness about others. He learned also the importance of loving, sharing, and caring about other people and to accept their differences. Also finding the joy in reading, he has increased his test scores in reading and math attempts to read, reading and math, and he attempts to read twenty minutes a day, and realizes the importance of reading that he gained while attending East Tennessee Freedom School Summer Program. As a parent, I enjoyed East Tennessee Freedom Schools and liked the curriculum, and my son plans to attend this summer. Therefore, I'm concerned that the KCS School Board's decisions for the East Tennessee Freedom School Summer Program are inspired more by politics and personal views than a commitment to our students, history of our education, and other cultures. Teaching the importance of reading by learning about others' cultures, histories, that mean confronting history's complexity that many of us are not willing to learn, it is a blessing that it is taught at East Tennessee Freedom Schools. On the other hand, providing transportation for our students is important, due to some not having transportation or parents working and unable to provide transportation. This program has helped students to become better students in their schools and will be a great asset to society. In closing, I hope that transportation will be provided to East Tennessee Freedom School Summer Program by KCS, and the curriculum will remain the same. The program has grown and thrived throughout the years by providing the support and education to our students and families of the summer program. Thank you for your time. And this is from Kristy Blevins. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Liz Garcia, and I live in Knox County. I hold a PhD in literacy education with an emphasis in children's literature. I'm the author of seventy educational stories for children, and I've been an educator for more than twenty years. I've also volunteered many hours supporting Freedom Schools, and I can say with full confidence that this program is the best summer literacy program I have ever seen. We are so lucky to have this program available to children here in our backyard. It's no secret that we have a literacy crisis in Knox County. Voters want to see this board acting to positively address that crisis. Current demand for summer literacy enrichment offerings exceeds the county's capacity. Yet we're calling into question the heart of partners who've offered us a proven, successful program that's helped some of our most vulnerable and under-resourced students maintain and improve their reading levels year after year. This unfounded distrust and paranoia echoes sentiments from decades-long past. Today's Freedom Schools program has its roots in the civil rights era Freedom Summer. In 1964, the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee sent hundreds of white college students to Mississippi to register Black voters and to run Freedom Schools. Summer enrichment programs for young Black Mississippians who suffered in an educational environment where their literacy was not prioritized. According to PBS, when the local white community heard that this Freedom Summer was going to happen, many people reacted with suspicion and fear. In Jackson, Mississippi, the city increased their jail capacity, and they even bought and armed a tank. Instead of letting fearful community members outside of East Knox tank the modern-day Freedom Schools program with speculative fears, I ask you to look at the hard data and facts. The local Freedom Schools program has been an outstanding partner to Knox County schools, providing countless hours of summer enrichment and other resources that have led to eighty percent of local participating scholars maintaining or exceeding their reading levels. Nationally, data on over seven thousand students who've gone through the program during the last five years demonstrates over eighty-five percent of students maintaining or improving their reading skills, with the majority improving. This success rate bears out in other national peer-reviewed studies of the Freedom Schools program as well. In a 2020 study of over four hundred scholars, they found that significant gains happened for students reading at frustration levels. So students who were having such a struggle to read that their frustration just got in their way, they just couldn't even do it. After they participated in Freedom Schools, they were able to read with greater ease and confidence. The same study particularly found strong skills development in students with a history of grade repetition. The national program has also been recognized by the Harvard Family Research Project for demonstrating ongoing success in providing quality learning opportunities for youth. As Mr. Watson said, "It's painfully ironic that nearly sixty years after Freedom Summer, we're having a discussion on whether predominantly Black students get to ride a bus. Please approve the MOU for these kids to use buses we're already running. Let's keep the county moving ahead instead of getting left behind."
Thank you. Andre Canty? Welcome. Just state your name and county of residence.
I'm Andre Canty, and as of month now, officially back in Knox County, so I'm back here. So, going to get started, I was the former co-chair of the Spirit Educational Outcomes Committee a couple of years ago. Knox Town, Tennessee, call me a professional agitator, y'all can just call me Andre, right? So, why am I here? There's always been delay and doubt when it comes to the benefit of our kids. It's why we wasn't integrated until 1972. It is why the recommendations that we put forth years ago with the DEO Task Force was delayed, while we were hearing mass numbers for Project Red and while we're here today. There's always doubt and delay when it comes to the benefit of our kids. So why are we here again? It works. Freedom Schools works. In fact, I have this thank-you note right here from some kids. I came for a reading, a book called Marvelous World. It wasn't anything superior as far as race, let's talk about the human race. It was a Black kid beating up aliens, right? So I think that's okay, right? I did a little dance to it, I embarrassed myself and everything, right? But the important part was that these kids got to listen and read about Black kids, Black heroes, their own culture, their own people, right? And it builds their confidence, it builds their self-esteem. I'm an English major. I read Beowulf, I don't know how many times, Weather and Rights, Weather and Heights, The Great Gatsby. Had nothing to do with my development, had nothing to do with what I saw in East Knoxville. But those books were important to me in my development. Not a lot about people who look like me, but again, that's what Freedom Schools are all about. And the text that was brought forth that was in question, we're talking about texts. A lot of these kids are living out that text. They're living what 1619 were written about. They were, they're living all of these, but we're talking about texts. Their experiences of why these texts are written, right? And it doesn't make anybody superior or have anybody attacked. I watched Rosewood in 1998. They talked about a Black, a Black town decimated by a false accusation. With the South Door Middle, I was just fine, right? Read Malcolm X, I was just fine, right? These kids are smarter than what you think they are, right? And the people that are involved, the teachers, the parents, everybody involved are backing this up, right? So to question Freedom Schools in spite of the validity, in spite of the impact- So to, to question Freedom Schools in spite of the validity, in spite of the impact that it has on District One, District Two, and minority kids throughout, are why books like sixteen nineteen exist. And if this MOU is not passed with transportation, I won't be worried about sixteen nineteen. I'd be worried about how history talks about this board and what they did. Um, and with that, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Patty King. Patty? Patty King. Can we keep the clapping down a little bit because we're trying to get through this? We have fourteen more just on this subject. So if you guys can just keep the clapping down, we'd appreciate that. Thank you. The speakers can't hear me calling their names. Thank you.
Patty King, Knox County. I'm here to speak against this MOA, MOU. Um, I've heard a lot of people saying we're speaking out of fear. I'm going to tell you a little of my history because Reverend Brettler and, or sorry, I'm not allowed that, sorry. I, because some school board members are saying that this is based on fear and stuff. When I was in elementary school, I was one of two white kids in my entire elementary school, okay? I know what it's like to have the, the, uh, excuse me, I'm nervous tonight, and I don't know why. To have the economy and all of that that everybody says District One and District Two has, okay? I lived it. I lived it from all of my elementary years, okay? This isn't about that. This is about a law, okay? This is about a law that can cause issues with Knox County schools, and that is why I'm speaking out about it. This, we have been reached out to by legislatures as members of their congre- constituents, sorry, and I want to let you know, I do feel sorry for these students, okay? I would be right there helping them, and I do help them with my business, okay? I just want you guys to know that it's a law that we're fighting, talking against, not the use, uh, not Freedom Schools. Freedom Schools, like any other people, can use the schools all they want, but it would be the same thing if, if another group that other people did not agree with was to come and want to use the buses. There would be the same fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Sherman. Welcome.
Thank you, Betsy. Uh, my name's Dr. Philip Michael Sherman. I'm a resident in Knox County Schools, a professor of Religious Studies, and chair of the Division of Humanities at Maryville College. And I'm here to voice my support for reaffirming this MOU with the Freedom Schools. I too was a bit surprised, and I've become more surprised, hearing the conversation this evening, that a few members of the board were raising questions about our connection to this program. I believe the Freedom Schools do important and vital work, both academically and socially, for students in Knox County. And the time is right to renew this partnership. I'm especially concerned, given reports that Knox County Schools is facing staffing shortages for its own summer programming at precisely the time when around sixty percent of rising fourth graders may need to access summer educational programs. I would suggest these partnerships are a lifeline we cannot afford to lose. This past June, Dr. Ryswick shared his four priorities for Knox County Schools. The first priority was excellence in foundational skills, particularly early literacy and middle school math. I know there's broad agreement on this board about the importance of these foundational skills. Reading initiatives like one book, Reed City, testify to the work members of the board are already doing to strengthen student literacy and instill a love of learning at an early age. I'm grateful for that. If there are legitimate, nonpartisan concerns about the curriculum utilized by the Freedom Schools, it sounds to me as though parents are being given an informed choice as to whether or not they want their students to participate. I believe the Board of Education should err on the side of providing a wide range of choices for parents and families wherever possible, even if some members of the board might not choose that curriculum for their own children. In truth, many of the concerns I heard in the work session and have heard this evening seem to simply echo political talking points, which should have little to no bearing on the local work of this Board of Education. I've been deeply concerned for some time with the shift to a partisan election for the Board of Education, and I think we're seeing the results of that shift this evening. I know that some members of the current board have expressed their desire for more deliberative discussions amongst members of the board. And while members may now be elected with a party label attached to their name, they are elected to fully serve all of the faculty, staff, students, and families of Knox County, every one. That is a very diverse population. Personal convictions, even deeply held ones, of individual board members should not be allowed to deny students opportunities to learn and grow. I do not believe the students of Knox County, especially those who are most in need of summer programming to help retain and strengthen literacy and math skills, should have their options limited because of larger political debates, or to score points, or because the state legislature told the Republican members of this board how they ought to vote on this matter. Simply put, a vote against the MOU is a vote against literacy. You cannot say you support literacy and then decide which books you think other people's children ought to read.
Thank you. Matthew Best. Matthew Best. Welcome. I saw you running. You got some time?
Make sure I get here.
Just state your name and county of residence.
Uh, Matthew Best, I live in Knox County. Uh, my name is Matthew Best, and I currently serve as the Executive Director of the Change Center. I've had the pleasure of working with young people in this city for at least the last seven years or so, uh, mostly in East Knoxville. And I've seen the impact of Freedom Schools on our community. In a state that, in a state that ranks as close to the bottom in education as we do, I find it hard to believe that there is even a consideration of pulling support for a program that focuses on elementary education at its core. Aside from the obvious benefits to the students, I've seen the way employment at Freedom Schools serves the college students and the young adults that staff these programs. The leadership development and skill formation that happens for them while also serving kids in the community is invaluable. All you have to do is attend one of the Freedom Schools training sessions for even just five minutes to see how energetic these programs are and what a phenomenal learning environment these folks are creating. I've also been impressed with the curriculum for the program and how empowering it is for children of all backgrounds. One of my mentees is a high school student at Career Magnet, but he attended Freedom Schools when he was younger, and he wanted me to share this message with you all this evening. He said that Freedom Schools was the first time he remembers being exposed to books written by folks that looked like him, about stories that were familiar to him, and featuring pictures of kids that looked like him. The importance of that cannot be overstated. The last thing I'll say is a bit selfish in nature, but last summer, I had the pleasure of being a guest reader at the program at Sarah Moore Green, and I can honestly say that it was quite the rewarding experience to see these kids who had clearly fallen in love with reading and learning over the course of the program was such a gift, and I know countless other professionals and community members were fortunate to have similar experiences. I and other readers get to show all of these kids what's possible, and hopefully inspire them to go on to do incredible things and to pursue excellence in their academic endeavors and beyond. I would implore anyone here to find a legitimate reason to stop supporting such a valuable program that has served our kids for years. Thanks.
Thank you. James Moore. James Moore. Hello. Please state your name and county of residence, please.
Hello. James Moore, Knox County. I'm speaking in favor of this MO, approving this MOU. Uh, my wife and I have two children that have attended Freedom School. Uh, my oldest son has been gone for the last six years, and my youngest son's been gone for the last two years. Also have a daughter that graduates next week from graduate school, and she did an internship at Freedom School. We chose Freedom School because we were looking for ways for our kids to continue, uh, learning over the summer break. Freedom School has exceeded our initial expectations, and we are huge advocates of this program. We donate our time, our money into this program, and we're also very careful of what we allow our kids to be exposed to. We have never seen anything remotely concerning us in Freedom School in their curriculum or the program. This program has done nothing but help our children become stronger readers and have taught them the importance of voting and how their voice has power. There are a ton, there are a ton of improvements that need to be done in Knox County school system. And I really do not understand why we're focusing on not promoting reading and helping this program to help our children. And in closing, I would like to encourage anyone on the board that has not volunteered to Freedom School to visit Freedom School, do a re-loud. I do it every year, and it's one of the most rewarding things, rewarding ways that I spend one of my vacation days on every year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Candace Halpert. Candace?
Hello. Good evening. I'm Candace Halpert. I live in Knox County. This is my son, Amir. He is a Freedom School student, and he is looking forward to attending Freedom School this summer. I am going to read some letters from parents that could not attend tonight, so this, here's the first one. I ask that KCS please vote yes to the MOU that will allow East Tennessee Freedom Schools to have access to bus transportation for its scholars. Its service that is already being provided at the KCS locations that ETF, ETFS is held. East Tennessee Freedom Schools program helps a lot of the kids in our communities. From a personal perspective, this will be my child's third year attending East Tennessee Freedom Schools, and this program has made such an impact on his life regarding him finding a love for reading, which he did not have before due to his struggles with reading. It has also helped with his self-confidence. He even takes the things he has learned from E- East Tennessee Freedom Schools and share with his classmates in regular school. My child has said several times he would rather go to East Tennessee Freedom School instead of regular KCS, and that says a lot to me. As a parent, I know that transportation to the program through the bus system of KCS would help a lot, and I would not have to be late for work every day. This service is already being provided to these schools and will not cost KCS a dime to add a few more kids to the bus route. And in all honesty, riding a bus to a summer program has nothing, nothing to do with the curriculum that ETFS uses that so, some may not personally approve of. Sincerely, Iris T. Sawyers. My daughter, Amaya, has attended Freedom Schools since she was in the seventh grade. I learned about this program and wanted to give it a shot, especially since it's focused on things like reading, since my daughter was in special education and behind on things such as comprehension. Also, she was very shy around others, and I wanted her to be around other kids she didn't know to pull the shyness out of her. After attending the program, I saw results such as her wanting to read books after bringing home books from the program. She was also more talkative, and it showed at the program, but also teachers recognized it at school. I am so grateful for this program. It is a success story for every child who has participated. Kendra Anderson. My son has been going to Freedom School for the last three years. As a Knox County school student, he goes to predominantly white school as a mixed-race student and has expressed feelings of being an outsider and unlike other students. He has, he finally has a great group of friends in his school, but I am so grateful for Freedom Schools for helping him along the way. Freedom School brings a unique model that allows for diversity, inclusivity, and camaraderie that my son would not otherwise have known or learned. From the morning, from the morning welcome chants of Ms. Denise's passion and dedication to each and every student in this, in the program, I never cease to be impressed.
Thank you.
This is from Amy Helman.
Thank you. Dion Moten. Did I pronounce her name correctly? De- Dion Moten? Did I pronounce that right? What's that? Are there more people out in, in the other room, maybe? Dion Moten? Okay. No?
I think he's saying no.
Okay. No. What? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Keith Bailey. And we will have to vote, um, on you as speaker since you live out of county, sir.
I will make a motion to approve this speaker.
I will second that motion.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Please excuse my casual dress. I hope to make it to a soccer game, but that's not going to happen. I'm Dr. Keith Bailey, the Professional Community Development Director at Harmony Family Center. And I don't live in Knox County. I've worked with children from Knoxville through the Child Welfare System and through other services for over thirty years. I come from a unique perspective in that I and my colleagues have trained staff in Knox County Schools, trained East Tennessee Freedom School staff, and trained about fourteen hundred of the National Freedom Schools' leadership and volunteers on creating safe and trauma-responsive educational settings. I was troubled by the debate that ensued on Monday night over a simple and seemingly positive MOU between the Freedom Schools and KCS. I was troubled by disparaging comments and arguments made against Freedom Schools that merits some pushback. There was a vague argument mounted against this MOU that disparaged Freedom Schools by stating that it had a strong alternative agenda without explicitly stating what that agenda was and what it was an alternative to. And the incendiary word indoctrination was used. There was also a more sensitive concern expressed that hearing different perspectives on history could cause confusion amongst students. To address the latter of these two items, the irony is that looking at things and considering them from different perspectives and experience is actually the antidote to indoctrination. Indoctrination demands looking at things from only one perspective and doing so without question. Looking at different perspectives, including those of history and lived experiences, creates what is called in the field of pedagogy and therapeutics cognitive dissonance, which is actually a good thing, because it causes us to look at the difference between two experiences and start to be curious about them, to analyze them, to see the merits and shortcomings of both, and to make an educated choice on what to do with the differing information. It leads to a higher-order thinking and emotional growth, and when children and youth have this experience of considering multiple perspectives that is guided by parents, caregivers, communities, reputable programs, and LEAs, it is the best-case scenario for both social and formal education. And what troubled me most in this debate was wanting to question the integrity of an agency without looking at what they are doing right. Let me give you a short list that follows Maslow's hierarchy. They feed kids. They allow them to move and play. They give them a safe place to be. They provide children with positive nurturing community of peers, mentors, community leaders of all colors and backgrounds. They teach them to read, and they teach appropriate civic engagement. Now, on a procedural issue, if you find that your personal morality and ethics of your role on this board conflict, the ethical thing to do is to abstain from voting rather than push your morality by way of vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Kent Minault. Kent?
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, good evening, board members. Um, I'm Kent Minault. I live at three-one-one West Glenwood Avenue in Knoxville. And I'm addressing you tonight on behalf of the, uh, local Sierra Club group here, the Harvey Broome Group, uh, with a local branch of a national organization with a strong interest in racial and social justice, which we believe to be essential components of environmental sustainability. We have two thousand members and supporters in the county, and we're asking you to vote for the MOU, uh, and the data sharing with Freedom Schools. Now, participants in Freedom Schools program are roughly eighty percent black and overwhelmingly low-income. Now, I'm a professional public school teacher, and I've taught literacy. Here's the thing. Folks in economic distress need all the help they can to get to progress economically, and language skills are at the top of the list of necessary tools. My decades of experience as a public school teacher taught me that every academic discipline, including math, relies on language skills for the transmission of learning. Making sure these skills are learned at an early age is key to helping low-income populations move into prosperity. Now, please reject claims that curriculum materials have some political agenda. The program really has no other agenda than giving participants a leg up in the learning process. Since the program is free to participating families and is supported by donations and grants, the district occurs no financial burden but gains a huge benefit in educational outcomes. Even the cost of the bus rides to program facilities, o- o- only two weeks of that does this district pay for, uh, beyond what it would normally pay for their own students. The huge advantage of this program comes from the wide support it enjoys in its own communities. Much of it comes from a group of pastors. The best way to keep students reading is to give The best way to keep students reading is to give them books they want to read. Please, support parent choice, student enthusiasm, and kids hitting the books. Vote yes for the MOU. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Constance Everly. Constance? State your name and county of residence, please.
My name is Constance Everly, Knox County, I live on the east side. Whew, let me say, the elephant in the room, because first off, this council is lacking comprehension. 38% of the United States adult population is illiterate. And when I talk about literacy, I ain't talking about your ability to read a sentence, I'm talking about your ability to read the sentence plus comprehension. You lack it. More importantly, let's say the real elephant in the room. This is not about Freedom Schools, this is about what Tennessee's struggle has always been culturally, racism and white supremacy. Because when we talk about doing something for the black kids, the same black kids we say, "Stop shooting yourself." The same black kids that live in a 47% poverty rate, the same black kids that Anthony Thompson Jr. was murdered in the black high school because he lived in the black neighborhood where several of his classmates had already been murdered due to the gun violence in our community. And now we're talking about youth enrichment, which these same black kids lack, because if you want to go to Jump Jam, you got to go west, you want to go bowling, you got to go west, you want to do main event, you got to go west. And this is something actually directly involved in our community that is strictly nothing more than youth enrichment. And you have used racism, white supremacy, and the state legislator, the same state legislator that kicked black men out for standing up for children who are scared of being murdered by mass murderers in our school, the same state legislator that we have Cameron Sexton, who doesn't even live in his district, has wrongfully taken his seat in the first place in office, the same Cameron Sexton who has used taxpayers' dollars through perdeum for his extra-fair meritals and misappropriation of tax dollars is who you bring here as a moral standard code of recommendation on what we should be doing in curriculum. Are y'all being serious right now in Knoxville? I have to echo Jennifer Owens, it is stupid, absolutely stupid, and it has no purpose other than you all finding ways to deflect and find reasons to continue to deny our communities and our children the necessary resources for success. This is why Knoxville College is important, it is an essential piece of our community that is missing, and I feel like if we had that, we would have other avenues and other resources. Let me wrap it up, because I only got 60 seconds left. I'm going to say this, black people in this room leverage your relationships, because they're going to say no to this. So this is where we call Randy Boyd now, say, "Randy, we need some money for these school buses, we need some resource to help us out, because you're taking our black land and build up your infrastructure, we're going to need some assistance right now." Y'all like taking pictures for Indy Cannon and all these other folks, y'all need to call Indy up, because let's not forget, the city has city schools and a memorandum agreement too, and we transfer money back and forth here. So taxpayers, you're actually already paying for before literally what you're asking for. But more importantly, Knoxville, this is why I am running for office, because I was mayor right now in Knoxville, we wouldn't be going through this, you could have came and asked me. I yield my time.
Thank you. Jessica Holman. Jessica? Hi. Just state your name and county of residence, please.
Okay, my name is Jessica Holman and I live in Knox County. I'm one of your principals in the district, I'm the principal of Green Magnet STEM Academy, which is in Region 5, the best region, and I am also the principal of the first and only STEM-designated, state STEM-designated school in our county. So I'm here today, of course, speaking in favor of this MOU, and I heard the word "choice" a lot, and I have, by choice, as a principal, agreed to host Freedom Schools in my school. Freedom Schools is a parent-choice program, so simply if parents disagree with it, they don't have to send their children. There has never been any parent concerns with the way the program runs, in fact, the community and the parents love it and get a lot out of it. Freedom Schools, in my opinion, from what I have seen and experienced personally, is good for all kids, but in particular underserved students in the community who are in need of a safe, structured, summer program that's focused on reading. To not continue this contract would completely ignore the needs and desires of my school community. As an instructional leader, I know from best practice research that reading really is rocket science. Students who are reluctant to read or read below grade level begin to grow and perform better in reading when they can connect their own experiences to the material in a meaningful and authentic way. This is a high-quality academic program intentionally designed to do just that. I've seen it myself, and I only want the best for my kids at Green, and I would not have them in my school if I did not think they were the best. So lastly, please help the children in my community meet the district's ambitious literacy goals. Do the right thing for them. Vote yes on the MOU with Freedom Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Hofseth. Becky? Is Becky here? Oh, sorry. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
I am the mother of seven, grandmother to 10, educator for 26 years. And I actually had a written script before I came. I've listened and I've learned a lot, and I just really want to affirm the whole endeavor to make children literate, and I commend it, but I have concerns about this particular program. And I would actually love to have some conversations with, I think it was Misty, maybe we could talk afterwards, because, I mean, it's just been a beautiful thing to hear how much this has helped children. And yet there's an element of it, that I actually went to the website, that should we raise red flags, I think, for any of us who actually are concerned about the direction that we're heading, where children are being subject to lies. Meaning that they could actually be a boy when they were born a girl. And so, I'm a little confused, and I'd like to understand, why is it that on the website it actually references books like, I mean, it's like if it's not in the curriculum, then why do they reference it on their website? So there is a book called Melissa, it's for young readers, it says, "When people look at Melissa, they think they see a boy named George, but she knows she's not a boy, she knows she's a girl." On that book list, from the book I Am Jazz, from the time she was two years old, Jazz knew that she had a girl's brain and a boy's body. She looked pink and dressing up as a mermaid and didn't feel like herself in boy's clothing. This confused her family until they took her to a doctor, who said that Jazz was transgender and that she was born that way. So, I don't know if in the room we all actually align with this, I hope not. So those of us who are speaking up and do have concerns and are pushing back, I like to think of this as defenders of youth, as well as upholders of the sacred role of parents to choose whether and when their child would be exposed to what is in truth a violation of humanity, a violation of science, and certainly a violation of the word and the will of God Almighty. So, if we move forward on this, can we really, truly address the elephant in the room? Do we want our children learning this? Give them all sorts of great books, there's so many out there, but get that out of it.
Thank you. David Lee? David? Hello?
Hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is David Lee. I live in Knox County, have two grandchildren in Knox County schools, one at Vine and one at Beaumont. And I'm the current president of Town Hall East, which is a neighborhood organization in East Knoxville. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself and our Board of Directors. At the beginning of the discussion, I thought I would have to scrap these few remarks because we were getting into technicalities, but I think we've gotten back to the nub of the discussion. We think it's cruel beyond our understanding to sacrifice the well-being of our children for what amounts to an almost meaningless ideological squabble among adults. The children are in need of the services, the educational support, and the material benefits that are provided by the East Tennessee Freedom Schools. The program has proved itself over the years, and it deserves your support. Worried about our organization, we are celebrating our 52nd year as a chartered community organization. We have African-American board members and officers and members, but we are not a predominantly black organization. We are, however, East Knoxvilleians, and we are delighted and proud to have such a program in East Knoxville, and we would urge you to support it. It sounds like you're in rather uncharted territory to some degree legally, and what better way to explore those uncharted waters than with this type of a very strong, proven program? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sherri Garrett?
My name is Sherri Garrett, and I live in Knox County. Hi. First off, the biggest concern, East Tennessee Freedom Schools, as Ms. Dean stated on Monday, is a franchise of Children's Defense Fund. And when you look at the Children's Defense Fund website, you see a lot of concern, there's a lot of activism on that particular website, a lot of concerns, books, and videos. One of the videos that I watched, as a matter of fact, earlier today, was, it was a Freedom Schools, it was in another state, however, it was a child who was doing a presentation on climate change, and the presentation ended with, "If we do all of this, the apocalypse won't happen and we won't die." That was what they're teaching these children. We've been talking about the formal agreement, the MOU, and the law that's in place right now. Any formal agreement right now, any formal agreement, may jeopardize state funding because of their teaching of these prohibitive concepts, that's on the Children's Defense Fund website. As I said, East Tennessee Freedom Schools and all Freedom Schools across the country are franchises of this organization. And it is because of their teaching of these prohibitive concepts, which is why it may be jeopardized. Their book lists and online videos prove that they do teach these concepts. Knox County Schools has no control over the curriculum, but any formal agreement can harm Knox County Schools. Teaching prohibitive concepts, as we know, violates state law. And after speaking with state legislators, Chairman John Reagan, who authored the state law, is standing ready right now to take action if you choose to pass this memorandum of understanding. Any formal agreement with this organization implies endorsement from Knox County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Hill?
Well, I may be about to burn a bridge or two, but I agree with the previous lady who said, mentioned that she's come and she's learned, and she's seen some beautiful things. And I believe in divine appointments. When I walked in tonight, the pastor who had one of the largest influences on my life and growing in Christ and seeking intimacy with God, was standing in the back of the room, and we chatted and caught up for a little while, and then we both had to exit to the overflow room where we encountered other people from the group here that are supportive of Freedom Schools that he had relationship with and was interacting with. And so I had the chance to communicate with some of those parties and get some of the questions that we've collectively had answered. And one of the conclusions I've come to is, I may, you know, it's one of those sayings, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. This may be one of those instances where I have to adopt that perspective, but everything I've heard and seen tonight about the local expression, and I'm being very clear, and I agree with the concerns about the franchise relationship, but the local expression says, "These are good and righteous people who are doing good and righteous things with children." And, I mean, I just sat a four-hour test on con law, and I had to write about Brown. And I'm telling you, I'm not going to be the white guy that tells a black kid they don't have access to education. I'm not going to be that guy. Now, next year, when I stand at this podium and all the laundry lists are approved, I'm going to hold people's feet to the fire for lying to me. But I'm sure as heck not going to be the guy that stands up and says, and it's not fear out of some great historical fear, that's some racist memory. You know where this fear we're encountering right now is, so we've got to give each other a lot of grace? It's called PTSD. We just went through three years of crap, and we're all hurting real bad, we're all real upset, and everybody's raw. And that's what the people who are concerned about, it's not because they don't want a black kid to have access to something, it's because we collectively, as a community, are suffering PTSD, and we got to love each other through recovery from that trauma. And so if me, from my political perspective, can be part of reaching across the aisle and shaking a hand to make that recovery happen by saying, "Take a risk, you already fought one lawsuit over frivolous crap, fight another one," and that is not what I planned to say when I came here tonight. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public forum for this agenda item.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so we can't.
Okay.
We'll take a break after this discussion, okay? Sorry. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the public forum speakers that came and shared, and thank you for taking the time and listening to us first. I know normally we want to listen to you first, so thank you for doing that. I would like to offer a substitute motion. That substitute motion would be for us to split the two issues apart, for us to both vote on data sharing and then have a subsequent vote on transportation. I believe that the Law Department can help us navigate that in terms of splitting those apart, so I would like to offer that we vote on each issue separately. Thank you.
So you are officially making a motion?
I'm making a motion to split the two issues, data sharing and transportation, and have them voted on separately.
All right, do we have a second?
If I second the motion, and if the motion passed, would we then be able to take a break and come back and vote on each one?
That's a great question, Ms. Owen, I like that question. Mr. DuPore? That would be a question for you.
Well, there's already a motion on the floor, and now you're asking for a substitute motion in addition to that, so...
So if the substitute motion passed, that would do away with the original motion, and we would come back to vote on two new motions?
Right, if it passes.
Yeah, yeah, if the substitute motion passes, then it does away with the original, that's correct.
Second?
All right. Reverend Butler, would you like to speak to that, or just take that vote and come back? Okay, so we have a substitute motion on the floor to split the MOU into two separate items, one be the data sharing and the other one be the transportation.
Let me provide clarification, should they both pass, I don't want to force the district to have two separate MOUs, I just want to vote on the two elements separately.
So you're voting on keeping those items in the MOU, or, I guess, if one passes, it stays?
In terms of its final form, in the final form, it would be one O-MOU, I'm voting on the issue, I want us to vote on the issue separately.
Right, that makes sense to me. Mr. DuPore, you can help navigate that, I assume. All right, all right, so Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a point of order of process, are we going to vote on one and then come right back and immediately, we're not going to take a recess or something? and immediately, we're not going to take a recess or something?
Well, what we were going to do, I think that what they're suggesting is if the substitute motion passes, then the original motion is no longer there and then we could take a break and come back and discuss the two separately.
Yeah, but they asked, do they not want two votes on, is that what they want?
Right. After the substitute motion to split.
But I don't, we're going to take a break in between?
Yes.
I don't know that you can do that.
Mr. Dupler?
That's why I asked about the process.
I'm sorry, I can't.
So, so as I understand it, Mr. McMillan, so there's a motion to approve the MOU and now there's a substitute motion to, to basically do away with, with that first motion and break, break it into two votes on the two concepts. So that's what you've got right now. You know, if you want, if somebody wants to make an amendment or, well, you can't make another substitute, so, you know, I mean, we can, we can go on, but, but that's what's, that's what's on the floor right now. And the question is, if the substitute passes, of course, if it doesn't pass, then, then you're right back to the, to the original motion. But if it passes, then, then, then now you're left with, okay, now you need to make motions to, to approve the two concepts, so.
But you're going to take a break between?
I'm not taking a break. I think that's been proposed.
Yes.
I, I, I just, I'm not going to vote for that because I don't think it's, it's right process-wise. It's not that I, you know, oppose what they're trying to do or something, but although I'm not going to support the original one, but, you know.
All right. Mr. Watson.
I just don't think, you know, that, that, that that is, is the way it should be done.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not, in my motion, I'm not asking for a recess. I'm, I'm simply asking for it to be split. I think it's, I think it's up to you.
We cannot have the recess.
Why don't you just withdraw the original motion?
Can I finish?
And then let him make a motion.
I'm trying to clarify my motion.
Right.
I never asked for a recess. I think that's up to you to decide if we're going to have a recess or not.
Yeah, we have several board members requesting.
All I'm asking is to split. Yeah, and I'm, I mean, to me, that's not, that's not a part of the motion. The recess is not a part of the motion. The motion is simply to split the two items.
I was just trying to get clarification for those board members desperately needing a, a short break. And maybe staff members as well, I don't know. So, we're going with the substitute motion? So we have a substitute motion and a second to split the two votes. Ms. company?
Dr. Butler? Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson? Ms. Bike? Ms. Horn? Ms. Henderson? Mr. Triplett? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Yes.
That's six yes votes, two no votes and one pass. Dr. Butler, did you want to change your pass vote? You don't want to change it or you want to vote no? Okay. So that's six yes votes and three no votes.
Okay. So the motion to split the two carries. All right. So, Mr. Dupler. Currently, there's no motion on the floor, correct? In your legal, in your legal opinion, if board members needed a short break, would it be inappropriate to take one right now?
Just let me talk about that just a minute because I believe Mr. McMillan's concern is that there might be some discussion during a short break and, and I would advise all members of this board to not discuss anything about what's currently before this board during the short break, but if it's, but, but.
Well, from what I'm, yeah.
Other than that, there's no motion on the floor.
From what I'm hearing, discussion is not what they're thinking about right now, so thank, so we will take a 10-minute short break because people are desperately needing that and we will come back.
I'm just, I'm just gonna keep doing it. All right. All right, so we are back. Mr. Watson, your light is on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the data sharing element of the MOU with Freedom Schools.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve the data sharing MOU in a second. Is there any discussion on that? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Doppler, sorry, caught you at a bad minute. I'm looking at the MOU on page five, number 23, and I'd just like some clarification here where it says, "Relationship of Parties." "The relationship contemplated herein is that of independent contractor. Nothing herein shall in any way be construed or intended to create a partnership or joint venture between the parties heretofore." So that would apply to our, our data sharing, and if we look at the bus part, that would apply to both, right?
So, Ms. Owen, you're looking at the, the alternative MOU that was provided this evening, correct?
Yes.
So, so that, that only applies to the data sharing. There's no, there's no fund expenditure with the data sharing, so we can say that on that one. The original MOU does not have that language.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate that we're speaking specifically about the data sharing agreement, but I do want to understand the language of it as well. So, just to be clear, Mr. Doppler, the reason that type of language was not in the original MOU is because that type of language can't be used when there's some in-kind transaction.
That's correct. This district has data sharing agreements with various third parties, and there is no relationship other than an independent contractor.
Thank you.
Mr. Triplet?
Quick question for Dr. Raisik. Do we share data with other, I mean, is this, if this data sharing should pass, is that a, I mean, do other, we have MOUs with other, like Emerald or Thrive, any of those other organizations that are not school-related?
Thank you, Ms. Triplet. I will, I, I just know because I talked to Steve Rutter today, I know, I could, I could go to you, Corey, but I'm, so we did ask that question, just to kind of say, and there is confirmation that there are other ones that exist with some other nonprofits in the community.
And this is sort of on the subject but off. Will this also open the door for transportation? Should that pass as well? I mean, does that create a situation where that becomes a, an open door that would be a challenge? I don't know if that's also for you, I think.
I'll take that one. So, maybe I'll answer the question this way. I'll try to. I'm not doing a very good job of answering questions tonight, just to make sure I don't forget them. So, I would say this, we, we did talk with Mr. Dillingham to ask if there are other existing transportation agreements with other organizations, and the answer to that is no. There are ones, and Dr. Adams, correct me if I'm wrong, there are ones where they pay for the contracted, you know, the, the buses, but there aren't any that, and some that there are agreements through like a community school and/or Knox Head Foundation or something like that who pays for those. But we, there's not one that Knox County School pays for. So, if you're asking, there, I would compare the two questions you just asked me to say, the data sharing, yes, we do have existing other MOUs, but as far as transportation being provided at Knox County's cost, we're not aware of these, talking to Mr. Dillingham.
Ms. Henderson?
I had the same questions as Mr. Triplet about our other organizations. Do we have the MOUs with them? Because I think all of these organizations do great work. Thrive, we've got Emerald Youth, we've got Boys and Girls Club. I just think, my other concerns too are just the lack of the KCS oversight, breaking the state law. I have a real concern about that, and I'm just also concerned about some of the national groups behind this organization, and I just think that they should probably go through the normal facility use process, just like any of our other groups may go through, that some of us agree with, some of us don't agree with. So that's why I'll be voting no on this tonight.
Ms. Owen?
Just a point of clarification. We are, we are just talking about the data sharing right now, right?
Yes. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the data sharing. Mr. Doppler, are we approving this MOU you handed out tonight for the data sharing?
So the motion is to, more generic, to approve the data sharing. I mean, certainly I would recommend that if this board only adopt the data sharing, that you use the, the alternative agreement which has been handed out. So, yes.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason I made it generic is because should the transportation also be approved, if both of them should be approved, then they should be in the form of one MOU. So I didn't want to get the cart before the horse and approve the means before we approved the intent. So, obviously, if one, if the data sharing gets approved and the transportation does not, it needs to live in an MOU. Mr. Doppler's already wrote an MOU, so I would think that would be where it would land. But I didn't want to hold us to an MOU on, on, on data sharing that's separate from transportation, should transportation also be approved. And I say that as if I know it is. I'm just saying, in the event of it gets approved.
Right. Ms. Horn, I'm sorry, yes, did I, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question on, or maybe just a clarification, I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. On the first page on number three, it says, "Request for Student Data," and this would be, so basically, the parent would have to sign off prior to any data being shared with the organization. Is that correct?
That's correct, Ms. Horn.
Okay, thank you.
Reverend Butler?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding that if, when we, if we pass this data sharing as a MOU, then the state law for the, the list of books or the curriculum would not apply, correct?
That's my understanding, Reverend Butler, the best, the best understanding that we have as far as the state laws are concerned, yes.
So that, so those materials, it's not an issue in terms of data sharing. All the data sharing does is allow the school to do a, to give them more information to do a better job of maintaining literacy over the summer. So it's not in any way, based on what we've discussed previously, promoting the program or anything like that. It's simply helping them to do a better job with the students that they are receiving, and it is, parents have to, have to approve it, and it's a parent's choice. Parents choose to come to the school with that understanding. Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would say that this data sharing agreement is much clearer than a lot of the data sharing agreements that we've had. Most of the software agreements that we have looked at all throughout the year, most of those have a data sharing component. Most of, most of the contracts we have with any kind of vendor that has any kind of data like that, student data, most of those have some kind of data sharing component like Pearson, Ames Web, all of those, so that they can, they can look at that data too. So that's just my point there. And Dr. Raisik, if I could ask a question. So when this whole discussion of this MOU came up, what was asked of us, and through the discussion, what did KCS offer?
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Well, I was not in that conversation, so I'm going to tell you what I think we've learned, and I think Ms. Dean kind of expressed some of that too today. My understanding was that the original conversation was around the data sharing, the possibility of expanding the program, and then the conversation about transportation came up. It was my understanding too, and again, Ms. Dean probably knows more about that than I do, because she was in the conversation, but it was my understanding that there was not an ask of Freedom Schools for the transportation, but the staff had conversation at that point, talking through that, and, and that was, that was offered and agreed to be put in the MOU for consideration.
So basically, our staff, through the discussion of the data sharing, our staff somewhere along the way seems to have said, "Oh, and hey, we've got some buses."
I think, I think, yes, and again, Ms. Dean could probably answer that better than I could, but I think it came up as, transfer, you can, Ms. Dean, please, if you don't mind. I think that the, the conversation, I don't think that was their ask for that. I think it came up as the discussing barriers on growing the program, and the staff made the recommendation, but, so I don't want to speak for you.
You did good, you did good. No, I mean, we're having a general conversation about the relationship between Knox County Schools and Freedom Schools, and how we benefit the students that you are deemed, you know, you're in charge of serving. And when we talked about all the things, we talked about, there's lots more children that we could serve. And so we talked about expanding in terms of sites, we talked about data sharing, because we tried that a few years ago, but at that point, you were doing, there was more of a focus on fluency versus comprehension. So since we focus on comprehension, it's just become available for us to do that comparison, to see if in fact, Freedom Schools is having the impact we want to have when they return in the fall. And as we were talking about some of the challenges, transportation came up. That's a barrier for many families. And they said, "Well, you know, we're going to the same schools." That's how it kind of evolved.
So it sounds like we have almost made an offer that...
It was a joint conversation. I mean, it happened in conversation. I don't think they said, "Hey, you want to get on our buses?" Right? I don't think it was quite that, but we wanted to explore what was possible in terms of getting transportation.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a little experience with the data sharing component with other organizations. So the organization that I get to steward in the Restoration House Partners and has an MOU with Emerald Youth Foundation, and Emerald Youth has had a data sharing agreement since at least 2015, which is when we started working with them. And to Dr. Bu, or Reverend Butler's concern, I'm fairly confident that they have not been asked to qualify their curriculum since this state law has taken place. So, being that they do have a data sharing agreement, and they have not been asked to do that, nor do I think any other data sharing institution that we work with or relationship that we have has been asked that, I do think it, I think, Mr. Doppler, I'm not, I know you know more about this than me, but I'm also saying from a common sense perspective, and seeing what's actually happening out in the community, this doesn't seem to have tripped any issues for those organizations that have, that are already using data sharing agreements with Knox County Schools.
All right, so, Ms. Henderson?
I think to address the, the question or the statement that was made, that in MOU we're not promoting them, I think by definition, an MOU is a formal partnership. In, in writing the text, it says that we're a partner, right, in the MOU language. And so I just think lots of these organizations do great work. They, again, have a right to use our facilities, but I also want to treat all of them equally. This seems to be the one that we're focusing on, but also using taxpayer resources. While I've heard from people on both sides, we're using taxpayer resources for a program that a lot of people are really concerned about. And again, back to the national organization, you know, I've found something that, that in 2019, they had a podcast saying that they, one of their main priorities for Tennessee was to raise activists. I don't know, to me, our job is to educate our kids, not to raise activists. So that's why I have a problem with this, the fact that this is MOU, which is a partnership.
I'm just going to remind everyone again, it's really difficult for us to hear when we have distractions in the audience. Reverend Butler?
Yes, in the spirit of treating everybody equally, what I'm hearing, Dr. Raisik, is that we have memorandums of understanding with other organizations, correct?
Thank you, Reverend Butler. That's correct, we do, and I don't know if it's Lautner, if you would like to speak to that, I'll let you speak to that.
We do have data sharing agreements with other partners, and to the question that was asked previously as to whether or not that opens the door for transportation requests, to my knowledge, that has never happened. So that is just a back and forth of whatever data has been requested and agreed upon. It is true that we are currently in the process of looking at what it would mean to expand access to more data sharing agreements. So as of right now, we are taking those requests as they come, and so if a partner has not made that request, then we've not necessarily offered that request. So when a request is made, we look into what it would take to process that request and make it accordingly.
So they do have data agreements?
Other partners do have data sharing agreements with us.
And they are called partners? Whether or not we, have we analyzed their...
I probably should clarify that I have not read every single one of those MOUs, so I wouldn't want to speak to whether or not we formally refer to them as partners. I did just refer to them as partners, but I don't know contractually speaking what that language looks like.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think that if we want to treat everybody equally, let's treat everybody equally. I think what was, what I'm looking at here is, you have an organization that is, that has been working with children in Knox County, in East Knoxville, in, in District One and District Two schools for several years, have a wonderful track record, both in terms of database success and parent satisfaction. And then, they're saying, "Hey, let's see if we can get data from Knox County Schools to make sure that we're doing what, the measures we got are accurate, and we can get, we can do the best job we can." So that's what I'm looking at here, that, that East Tennessee Freedom Schools, that's what they've asked, that's what they came asking for. In the conversation, transportation came up, but what they really was asking for is, we want to do a better job in working... But what they really was asking for is, we want to do a better job in working, in, in working with our kids during the summer. So I think that's the data agreement here, is not anything else that I see, but that's, that's just me.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're just talking about the agreement right now, not the MOU, right?
The data sharing agreement?
Right, so that, it, I mean, it's, this isn't the, this isn't an MOU, it just says data sharing agreement.
Right, and Mr. Watson said he left it intentionally vague. Correct, Mr. Watson, is that what your motion was to?
That's true, Madam Chair. I don't think we know what the final form will be. My presumption is that it would look very similar to the agreement that's been provided. And in that agreement, there is line 23. I do appreciate Ms. Lautner speaking about, she said partner, but she's not speaking from a legal standpoint. That point 23 in this, should this be the final form, does say that, and it actually in fact does not create a partnership or a joint venture. So I understand that we may feel like it's a partnership, but legally speaking, it would not be a partnership if, if this form is used, which I would presume that it would be, it should, it should get approved.
I think Cory answered my question. I just wanted to clarify that an MOU and the data sharing agreement are two totally different things. So we have data, or, I mean, whoever can answer that, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Cory. So we have data sharing agreements with the other organizations, not an MOU. Is that correct?
Well, I would probably defer to Mr. Dupler. I imagine we do have MOUs that also include a data sharing component, but we also have data, data agreements that exist separate from MOUs. So it might be a both and.
So most, if not all, of the data sharing agreements call for independent contractors. They do not call, that's, that is a legal term. It's not a partner. You know, a partner has, has legal connotation. So there are various types of MOUs. And as, as Ms. Lautner said, I mean, some of them are, some of them do include data sharing, some of them don't. There's a lot of software, as Ms. Owen said. And all those software ones, I guarantee you, say independent contractor. So again, I mean, Mr. Watson's kind of made this motion a little bit vague, but if this board does adopt the data sharing agreement, then, then it's clear that, that you all still will be independent contractors, so.
Okay.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have another question for Mr. Dupler, please. Mr. Dupler, so back to Mr. Watson's question. Should both of these issues pass, would the document then, would it be the original document that is attached to our agenda? Or would it be two separate documents?
All I can discuss right now is the motion that's on the floor. I, you know, I don't know if, if, if the second motion is going to ask for the MOU, you know, because, you know, right now, you're just asking for data sharing, is my understanding. That's it.
All right. We have a call for the question, and the motion was for to approve the data sharing agreement? Is that what, Ms. Cootney, was that the motion?
Yeah, my, my motion was to agree the data sharing element of the MOU, not the final form of the MOU itself. And I know we have, I don't, technically, if we need to vote for the call for the question, that's fine, but I do have a technical question for Mr. Dupler. The reason I was doing that was to try to save effort should both pass. Mr. Dupler, if, if I amend my motion, I don't know if I can. If I can and it can be seconded and I ask for the agreement, is it an issue legally for them to have a separate data sharing agreement from an MOU that involves transportation? I'm trying to not have it where it would have two documents if, if they should both get approved.
It might, it might be simpler just to do two documents.
Yeah, I think the, I think the motion itself has honestly created a little confusion at this point, so.
There I go, trying to be helpful.
And now you've got a, and now you've got call, call for the question. So, so, so the board's going to have to vote on that? Oh, 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 we don't, okay, all right, so. So we don't have a second on that right now, so if you want to try to amend it.
So I would like to amend my motion to approve the data sharing agreement that's been presented by Mr. Dupler in, in that form.
And Ms. Owen, you were seconded. So with that, can we go to Mr. McMillan's call for the question? Or do we, oh. Can I second it or second? Okay, I will second Mr. McMillan's call for the question. And we will vote on calling, we are voting on calling for the question now. Ms. Cootney?
Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bike?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
That's nine yes votes.
So motion carries. So now, the question being, we are, the motion to approve the data sharing agreement that was presented by Mr. Watson and seconded by Ms. Owen. Ms. Cootney? Dr. Butler?
The motion is to approve the data sharing agreement that was provided by Mr. Dupler this evening, and it was seconded by Ms. Owen. So this is a roll call vote on that.
Make a comment, please.
The question was called for in that past, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed all of that.
It's been a long night.
Yeah, yeah.
You can read the motion.
You can, we'll, we'll read the motion again, Reverend Butler. So we are voting on approving the data sharing agreement that Mr. Dupler gave us prior to the meeting. The motion was made by Mr. Watson and seconded by Ms. Owen, correct? All right. We voted on that.
We voted on it?
That was what we voted on.
Just now, that's what you voted on just now.
That was the last vote, was calling for the question. I think discussion was done anyway though, so I don't know that.
She was saying that the question was called before the motion was made? The question was called after the motion was made, then we just voted on the question?
The, the agreement, the data sharing agreement. So now we are, I know, so now we're voting on the data sharing agreement that we have here. Um, okay.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bike?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Triplett?
No.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
That's six yes votes and three no votes.
So motion carries. All right, so Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the transportation agreement or MOU, I guess that's the form it's in, minus the data sharing component that's within it with Freedom Schools.
All right, so we have a motion for the transportation piece of the MOU.
And I have a technical question about my motion. I want to make, because I, I feel like I got unintentionally played like this about two years ago, related to something like this. I want to make sure that by me stripping it, and if it passes, that I didn't also devoid what we just did. So I'm not saying I intentionally got played, but I want to make sure that that's real clear.
Mr. Dupler?
No, I, I, thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Watson, I, as I understand your motion, you want to keep the MOU intact, except for the data sharing, which is now a separate agreement? Correct, right, yeah, that's my.
All right, so we have a motion for the MOU with the transportation piece. Do we have a second? Do we have a second for that? All right, so Reverend Butler?
So just to make sure I understand, so this is the one that has the issue about the law and that we have to comply with the law. I think it was Dr. Susan, is it Gronk? Greinke, thank you. That you talked about the Freedom School already has a curriculum examination process that is rigorous and consistent with what the state does. Is that correct? Is it, is it appropriate for me to ask her to explain that again, please?
You can ask her to come up to explain it if you want.
Will you come up and explain that? And also talk about the relationship, I think you stated, that you all have with the Freedom Schools? But, but just that portion that you brought up.
So I was a curriculum writer for the Freedom Schools for many years. And I was asked to write curriculum that was rigorous. I was asked to write curriculum that was standard, is standards-based and age-appropriate, using multicultural children's literature that is vetted every year by a committee of school media specialists, university professors, members that sit on the credits, Scott King Book Award Committee, which is an American Library Association Book Award Committee. The curriculum is structured around the theme of, I can make a difference. And so each book is vetted to ensure that it fits that theme and that it encourages young people to think about, through the reading of multicultural literature, it encourages them to think about, how can I apply this to my life and think about how I can make a difference in my life, in the life of my community, my, in the, in my family, and in the world? The curriculum, so for each book, when I would write that curriculum, I would read the, the books that were selected multiple times. I would read the, the state standards multiple times. I would keep this in mind about this theme of making a difference. And each book has a week's worth of scripted lessons that start with a pre-reading activity, a during reading activity, and a post-reading activity. These activities are aligned with state reading standards. They focus on reading comprehension. Instructors are trained to ask questions about the, the key details of the text, the main ideas of the text. They're asked to, to ask discussion questions about, about the characters in the text, about the plot, symbolism, the settings, the theme, author, craft, tone. All of these things are standards that I train our beginning English teachers at the University of Tennessee to be able to implement when they are out in the field, which, which they do a year-long field experience in, in Knox County Schools. And we're very proud of that partnership. We've been doing that for almost 20 years now. And we have about a 99% job hire rate. Most of our students who graduate from our internship program get hired by Knox County Schools. A lot of our students have become teachers and department heads, literacy coaches, and literacy leaders in Knox County Schools. So, and as I said earlier, I've had to, I've had to become very, very familiar with the Tennessee law on prohibitive concepts. We have a similar law in higher education on divisive concepts. So we're talking about this as university faculty. We are working with our legal counsel at the university level to make sure that we are within the language of the law in the curriculum that we use on campus. And that translates to making sure we are in the language of the law when we are working with beginning teachers, that we know are going to serve the state of Tennessee. So yes, I can vouch for, from having written that curriculum, that it is within the, the, the language of the law. So does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, but also, do you have documentation of that process?
Of the process that I've gone through?
That you just explained for, for Freedom Schools?
Yes.
And would Freedom Schools be willing to share that process? And, and the, the experts or the professionals, the committee that, that did the work and what the findings were?
I, I can speak for Mrs. Dean, I speak on behalf of Mrs. Dean, but I, I would be happy to share that process and talk through that process, absolutely.
Mrs. Dean, would you be willing to do that?
Sure, she's more expert on that part than I am.
Okay, and, and so, thank you so much. And the reason why I asked those questions was because there is a concern, and I have a concern, that we followed the law. That's one of the requirements that I have. One of the things that I learned in the orientation that I first had with our chairperson and then also with the Tennessee State, Tennessee School Board Association, was that one of our, one of the things we have to do is follow the law, follow federal and state law, and follow federal and state regulations. So it concerns me when we talk about something that we may not be following the law. Quite honest with charter schools, that Title IX issue concerned me. But, you know, we passed it and, and I said we, I didn't say you, I said we. I was part of the board when it passed, and so I'm part of the board any other time. And I'm part of the board now, I'm saying I have that concern. But hearing that and hearing the professionals who are looking at that, and I'm saying that is one way we can have assurance that it has been looked at. Now, I do understand what you're saying about the national organization. We could debate that all night long and not necessarily agree. But one thing I think we may be able to agree on is that what we just heard could be, I didn't say is, but could be, a way for us to show that we have been assured with not having a process in place. We have a process in place. So that is my understanding of that. So I think we're voting on whether or not we're going to put kids on the bus, right? Okay, so, so with that said, I think that this is needed to help us expand, help the Freedom School expand and help the students in, in, in the East Knoxville. And one of the reasons why I'm saying us is because, is a couple of District One schools, Region Five schools, we talking about all this stuff we're going to do for Region Five. And this is one of those things that really would be a shot in the arm for Region Five. So, thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the two days that we've discussed this, or two meetings that we've discussed it, I have heard a lot of folks on the board, and I respect your concerns related to the Children's Defense Fund and things that you found on their website. I do think it's important to note that what they have on their website is really not up for discussion, even when it comes to state law, and that what we're really talking about is the curriculum that's used within the East Tennessee Freedom Schools. And there's lots of national organizations that have lots of different thoughts about lots of different things. But that's not what we're debating tonight. We're debating whether or not, and I think some of us are debating whether or not we feel like in our minds that the very, the, the very particular curriculum that's being used by Ms. Dean and others at Freedom Schools, whether or not it breaks the Tennessee law or not. We've heard from at least one professional that feels like in her opinion, as a doctor and somebody at the University of Tennessee who's written the curriculum and also been training teachers on how to interpret the law related to their practice, doesn't feel like it does. So again, I would, I would urge those who are concerned about the, the full body of work that the CDF has put out, to not confuse that full body of work with what's being taught to kids within Freedom Schools in Knoxville, Tennessee. I can't speak to that full body of work, nor do I intend to try to, because that's not my purview as a Knox County School Board member. What I'm being asked tonight is to consider whether or not a program that's asking for some additional resources, and actually didn't even directly ask for it, but it came up in a, in a dialogue, in a conversation out of wanting to mutually benefit children. I would ask us to, to, to limit our decision-making on what we believe about Freedom Schools. And we heard person after person after person who's been directly involved in it, who have written curriculum from it, whose kids who have experienced it, who have served in it, only speak good about it. And yes, we did have, there was a lot of people to count, but I think we only had two people, actually. two people actually speak against it. One, I thought, was going to, actually didn't, which, I'm going to give that man some love later.
That was surprising.
That was, I mean, but...
Right, I loved it, I loved it.
But that's great. I mean, that's so good. And it's, for me, for him, it's not just about this one decision. It's just like, man, here's somebody who I know would have been challenged with this, saying, "Hey, I want to listen," right? I mean, to me, that's like what we need more of. And so, that's what was so good about it. It wasn't because of this one particular decision. So, anyway, we, the community knew this was coming, this was talked about a lot. Yes, we did have some people who came and expressed legitimate concern. They were by far in the minority, tonight, anyway. So, again, I would encourage us not to get confused about making an indictment against a national organization about their full body of thought that they put out in the world, but that we would honor an organization that's honored our kids for at least the last six years.
Can I, I'm going to interject here, because my transportation concern was two-part. So, I'm going to, this is mostly me speaking to Reverend Butler here right now, but, so, the other part was other organizations provide, and first, let me start by saying, I have no problem with 100 kids riding in 100 bus seats to a school that the bus is already traveling to. I have no issue with that. And, you know, if there are space for other organizations to do the same on buses that are stopping in those neighborhoods and going to those schools, I mean, I would say the same thing. So, my question is, it seems that there is a transportation piece that, where we are not already running those buses in those neighborhoods. And as a board member, that raises the question of, you know, you want to be fair to everybody, right? So, if another organization needs transportation for two weeks, we want to be fair, right? So, my question to Reverend Butler is, and I've talked to Dr. Adams about this a little bit, I think you said Freedom Schools start a week later, or a week, or, but, there was a week...
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes ma'am, that is correct. They start a week later.
So, we're talking those buses that would already be stopping in those neighborhoods with the empty seats and going to the schools, that would be three weeks of the six-week program?
That is correct. They would, when the SLC's program, when that is completed, there will be three additional weeks that Freedom Schools will be open.
So, we are talking about the transportation for the three weeks that we have kids already in school? Or are we talking about, I don't know, are you all following where I'm going with this? I just, okay, so, I just wanted to throw that out there to kind of digest, if that makes sense.
You want me to respond?
Well, you can think about it for a minute, and I will go to Ms. Horn. I just wanted you to digest that, because that's kind of where I'm at. I'm thinking about these other organizations and, but...
Well, unless she's going to speak on the same thing, I would prefer to go ahead and respond.
Okay, that's fine.
Because I may not remember what I'm going to say.
Right, that's fine. I'm sure Ms. Horn won't mind if you go ahead.
No problem.
I'm just honest, I'm at a point...
Absolutely, go ahead.
It's after nine o'clock, so I'm at that point. So, what my response is, is that if we were to pass it, I think that the Freedom School would take what they can get. So, if it's, and when we first talked about this, I'll be honest and say, I thought we was talking about the same timeframe. And the comment I made was, is that we're talking about putting kids on buses that are already running. So, if that was an accurate statement, that would be three weeks.
Okay.
So, that's the statement, that's what I meant then, and that's what I mean now. If we run the buses when the kids are not going to the school for the Knox County purpose, Knox County Schools' purpose, then it wouldn't be buses already running. So, I made the comment, I stand by it.
Okay, all right.
I'm not sure how, what the mechanics workout is, but that's the statement I made, that's the statement I stated.
Okay, I just, I wanted to be clear on that, because there were some kind of questions in, I think, when we started talking to Dr. Adams, if there were six weeks or four weeks. And I just wanted to be clear on that, because like I said, I don't have problems with kids riding on any empty bus seats for any organization.
What my concern, two-fold, was, number one is when we talked about whether or not us, letting them ride on the bus would be promoting. I didn't think it would, really, because they're just riding on the bus already going. You're not spending any extra money on them.
Right.
The second thing, excuse me, I'm sorry, the second thing was, though, is that if it's not, if they're not going, if they're going, if it is an issue, then we have something in place to make sure that we are following the law.
Right. I'm just thinking that whole funding piece could probably be argued if the buses were, we were already paying that for the buses, anyway. I mean, if somebody, I don't know, it's getting late, if that even makes sense. Ms. Horn, I'm going to go to you now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, obviously, everybody knows I am very much for parental rights and parents making decisions. So, that's why I voted, well, one reason why I voted for the data sharing agreement, because parents give their approval for that, and they're choosing to send their children to Freedom Schools, so, and also since it's consistent with practice otherwise, I feel very comfortable with that. I share the concerns that Ms. Henderson and Mr. Triplet have raised about the national organization, and Ms. Dean, you know, testified on Monday, or spoke with us on Monday about the fact that, you know, that they definitely are a part of that organization, and so that's a concern for me to have an MOU. Obviously, very impressive testimonies this evening, no doubt, and I have no doubt that kids love to go and that parents are passionate about it. And so, parents have every right to utilize that. As we also talked about the other night, I think it's very different when you look at this organization asking for facility use, which is what's been done in the past, versus what we're looking at here, which would commit resources, because even if it's not going to commit additional dollars, it does commit additional resources. And I also, Ms. Christie, have the concern about other organizations that meet in our schools, that when they see or hear that this organization has bus privileges, but other ones don't, because a lot of our schools have Boys and Girls Club, Kid Time, YMCA, all these different things. And so, I'm not sure that we've fully recognized the gravity of the ripple effects and unintended consequences. And I also think that there's been a lot of questions, frankly, and so, anytime you have this many questions, that's a concern for me. And I'm not sure that we've thought through all of the issues. So, for that, for those reasons, I will not be supporting this.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, is the motion looking at providing the buses for the full-time, or only for the time, only for those three weeks when the time overlaps?
Thank you, Ms. Owen, thank you, Madam Chair. There's nothing explicit in the MOU, as I read it, that actually speaks to the duration. What I was asking for was approval of the MOU minus an effect, a few bullet points related to the data sharing. I would think if the MOU were to get worked out, would, in the way, the spirit of the MOU is if the resources are available. To me, if buses aren't running, then the resources aren't available. And so, Ms. Dean and the organization for years have figured out other transportation opportunities. And to Reverend Butler's point, I can't speak for Ms. Dean, but I would assume she would take what she can get, and if that's three weeks, she doesn't have to find transportation versus the other three weeks that she might. My assumption is, with her and this robust community, they'll figure that out. And again, the MOU is not explicit. It does not commit the district to any period of time, whether it's six weeks, four weeks, three weeks, whatever. Seems like the spirit of the MOU is if and when the resources are provided, even down to the specific seat. If the seat isn't available, then they would not be able to use it. So, it's nuanced in terms of resource availability, but it doesn't speak to duration.
Mr. Dupler, is that the way you hear it also?
Page two of the proposed MOU states that transportation is available to the Freedom School if they are operating at sites where KCS is running a summer learning camp. It goes on to say, "if already running buses and running at the same times within the school zone and have open capacity." So, it would be limited to open seats. It also says, "if funding to provide transportation is available." So, if transportation is not available at that particular school, it would not be provided. So, that's already in the MOU. So, my reading of the MOU agrees with what Reverend Butler's talking about.
Good, thank you.
All right, Dr. Adams, I have a question for you, sorry, I know it's getting late. So, speaking in terms of some of these organizations, I mean, I would love to get to a place where we could work some of this out, or work out a compromise. Is this, do you see this being, I mean, I know we have a lot of organizations in our schools, right? And I guess it's really hard to predict, you know, how many are going to see the outcome of this and say, "Hey, I want to ride on those buses." And then, if there's a bus going to a school, and there's two or three organizations having a summer program in that school, suddenly, it might be that there's room on the bus for some of the programs. And I know that this is all hypothet, but I can see us getting in, I don't know, can you speak a little to that, or if you would have, I guess, concerns about that? Because I want to be clear, it's not that I have issues with these, it's not that at all. I'm just trying to think ahead, because I don't want to be in a position where we have two or three organizations at the same school needing transportation, and suddenly, there's seats for half the kids and not the other half, and then what do you do? Not give transportation to any? Or are we in a position where we have to add another bus? And, you know, transportation is a really big expense, as we all know. I don't know if you can shed some light on that. You probably can't, but...
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It is not problematic for the simple fact that this is a unique situation where we have SLCs going to a school site. It's not, we have a policy where we have to pick up a student at a certain address and take them to, I'll just say Chuck E. Cheese, right? So, we are staying within the realm of what the policy states, and so, it's certainly not problematic. And I'll take it a step further to say, if they were able to adjust their schedule to a four-week timeframe, we could align much easier. And I do want to apologize to Ms. Bike, the question that you are asking me, I was referring to the program, the overall program, as far as the SLC mixed in with Freedom Schools transportation. So, there is no cost, of course, if we're already running buses, but when you get outside of that window, we could get an exact amount if they chose to work with a contractor.
So, what I'm hearing you say is that it would not be problematic for transportation?
That is correct. And we are currently working with Girls and Boys Club and having conversations on how we could be better partners. But, you know, once again, that's, those are routes that are currently happening, and we're having those discussions. So, no, we will not, in my opinion, and I've had several conversations with Ryan about that, he's not concerned about it either.
And I assume if it were to become problematic, you would bring it back to the board and...
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. Adams. So, we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Watson, I believe it was, to approve the transportation piece for the buses when they're already running to the school, right?
Yes, Madam Chair, and specifically to approve the MOU before, minus the data sharing component.
All right, and we had a second by Ms. Bike, all right. Ms. Coating?
Dr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Bike?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
No.
Ms. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Triplet?
No.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
That's five yes votes and four no votes.
Motion carries. All right. We will continue on, Ms. Coating?
Item 10A, approved contract with IC System Incorporated for provision of collection services for unpaid student meal accounts for the term of June 1, 2023, to May 31, 2024, which may be extended for four additional years.
A motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Triplet, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any, that's okay. Any opposed?
No.
So, we have one no, one pass. Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Dr. Butler? We're doing, we're going to do a roll call vote on this item, since there's a couple of... Yeah, the motion is just to approve the contract with IC System as item 10A.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Owen?
No.
Mr. Watson?
My apologies for the word, I was getting excited about any of this meeting, so, pass.
Ms. Bike?
Pass.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
That's five yes votes, two no votes. Mr. Watson, did you want to change your pass vote?
No.
Ms. Bike, did you want to change your pass vote?
Okay.
Five yes votes, two no votes and two pass.
Good, so, motion carries.
Item 10B, approved contract with Kington Sewer Septic Drain Cleaning Service Incorporated for pumping grease traps for kitchens at an approximate cost of $265,000 annually for the term of May 1, 2023, to April 30, 2024, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
10C, approved design contract with Goodwin Mills Kaywood LLC for improvements at Bearden High School in the amount of $225,000.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
10D, approved contract with King Construction for renovations at Lincoln Park Center for the Newcomer Academy at a cost of $4,478,590 using SRO 3.0 funds.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
10E, approved addendum to statement of work to contract with TRA School Software Solutions, TRA Incorporated, at an estimated cost of $499,812.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A, approved 2024 Board of Education Annual Calendar.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11B, approved fiscal year 2023 general purpose budget line item transfers in the amount of $690,584 for January 1, 2023, through March 31, 2023.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we will move into public forum, Ms. Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, we have Donna Dillon. Please come up, state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name's Donna Dillon, I'm a Knox County resident, and I just wanted to speak about HVA, Horn Valley Academy, is hurting right now. We're hurting because our principal, friend, supporter, comforter, and leader has been taken from us for reasons unbeknownst to us. The overwhelming message is that Dr. Spees is a scapegoat for the district shortcomings and poor security policy and lack of communication. It seems in today's world lockdowns, incidences, and threats occur daily in Knox County and surrounding county schools. Not one other principal has been suspended. As you can see, the copy of the petition I have provided for you, we have 670-plus parents... of the petition I have provided for you, we have 670-plus parents, teachers, proteges, and students who hold Dr. Spees in high regard. Please allow me to quote some of the seniors that Dr. Spees has been with the whole four years as they graduate this year. "Dr. Spees has been an amazing, has been amazing all throughout my high school experience, from interacting with students at sporting events through the hallways where he always puts the students first. He is an excellent leader who always does what's best for the students. I really wish I would be able to shake his hand at my graduation." Principal, Hardin Valley Academy is a better place with Dr. Spees as its leader. That's Luca Moore, a senior football captain at Hardin Valley Academy. "It would be great to have Spees at our graduation. He's been our principal for all four years. He is always in a good mood with a smile on his face and encouraging word. I feel like he has helped me a lot in school and graduation won't be the same without him." That's Todd Denton, senior captain of the baseball team, voted most athletic, superlative. And a few quotes from the teachers who are afraid to voice their concerns due to repercussions. "Dr. Spees has always encouraged me, challenged me, and taught me how I can best put kids in my classroom first." Another one is, "I'm heartbroken. It's like a death has occurred." Another one, "During hard times, Dr. Spees has always reminded us that it is our, our role to support and love our kids." Next one is, "We're struggling as teachers and staff. There's so many things left in the balance and we are weeks and weeks behind where we need to be. We haven't even been told why he is suspended. Nevertheless, we are heartbroken and hurting. And we would ask that you please see the importance and the respect that Rob Spees holds at Hardin Valley Academy and in the Hardin Valley community and reinstate him as soon as possible." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Courtney Piper. Is Courtney still here? Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Courtney Piper. I live in Knox County. I want to reiterate my appreciation for the board's discussion and its May work session about ABA therapy in the classroom and a policy to allow it and other outside therapy providers. The discussion was encouraging. It was especially encouraging to the more than 140 parents that have gathered together in support of this issue since February. ABA therapy is the only therapy approved to treat autism spectrum disorder, and it was good to hear the board's discussion centered around the medical necessity of this therapy and questions about its application in the classroom. I want to encourage KCS and the Board of Education to maintain forward progress with this new comprehensive policy for outside service providers and ensure it specifically allows for students with autism to have their applied behavior analyst or ABA therapist join them in the classroom. I hope the draft policy specific to ABA that I presented last month and the citations used to draft it proved helpful. And I look forward to reviewing this new comprehensive policy at the May 19 Policy Agenda Review Committee. There are three key areas I want to make sure are addressed in this comprehensive policy. First, it's critical that any policy redirects the current mindset at KCS, which treats ABA therapy as if it were elective, and provides a clear process for autism spectrum disorder students to receive medically necessary treatment at school. Second, currently, KCS central office staff can supersede orders from a medical doctor and licensed board-certified medical professionals when recommending interventions in an IEP. In short, the question of whom deems what to be medically necessary is an item of high importance. Third, I want to make it perfectly clear, we want our insurance-provided ABA therapists in the classroom. We are not asking KCS to incur the costs of providing ABA therapy. I believe addressing these items will ensure no other parent has to experience what my husband and I went through, as we waited five months for an answer to the question, can my son's therapist join him in the classroom? The answer to that question was eventually no. So I voiced my concern at a February IEP meeting that the only therapy approved to treat autism spectrum disorder was not being recommended. We then decided to remove my son from school every Thursday so he could attend therapy. He's approved for 30 hours a week. This is a medically excused absence, but unfortunately, now this increases his school's chronic absenteeism rate. And it doesn't have to be this way. Finally, I want to express my appreciation for being selected for the Special Education Task Force and hope that my contributions will affect positive change. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Galloway? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Galloway. I live in Knox County. I've been a teacher and a coach at Hardin Valley Academy from the first day we opened in 2008. I've watched my three kids grow up in the HVA gym, and I have matured as a teacher and a coach through the leadership of both Hardin Valley Academy's administrations. Our school has always been led by a person who challenges the teachers and who has the kids' best interest at the front of every decision made, all while making sure we are aligned with the district's vision. HVA, like our district, is striving to help our students become 865-ready. 865-ready is a new initiative in Knox County schools, but many don't know that Dr. Spees has already started that movement in his first four years as principal at Hardin Valley. We are headed in the right direction to prepare our kids to be 865-ready and for them to make an impact in the Knoxville community and beyond. This is largely because of Rob Spees. And despite some of the most challenging years with COVID and its aftermath, we are moving forward and we are moving forward fast. We have changed our building layout and our schedule so that our kids have the space and time to experience all that the 865 Academy's program has to offer. Rob is the leader of this movement. He is the driving force behind the innovative things we are doing at HVA. But our momentum has been halted over the last month. We are in a holding pattern as we wait for answers while our leader is being investigated and we watch his name getting dragged through the mud. HVA and Rob Spees have been represented, misrepresented in the news and on social media. So now we wait for answers, hoping that we get our leader back and not just another setback. What do I mean by setback? Some teachers at HVA are under the impression that even if Dr. Spees is exonerated by the investigation, he still may not be back at HVA next year. I can't imagine why this would even be considered with as much support as he has from our staff and community, but it's still a concern. No one seems to be willing to say that if Dr. Spees did nothing wrong, then of course he would be reinstated at HVA. But if you don't do this, then I believe our 865-ready efforts will be set so far behind where they are now, it might take us years to recover. Not only that, but you will have a group of disappointed teachers. Don't misunderstand what I'm saying today. The teachers at Hardin Valley are still getting the job done. We're doing what's best for kids while we continue to hear vague or false information about our school and our leader. Regardless, we have kept our kids alive and we have continued to teach and prepare them to be lifelong learners throughout this whole process. This includes the day of the gas leak. Hardin Valley Academy is such an awesome place. We are doing great things, and we'll find a way to be better than ever in all we do academically, athletically, and artistically. And Rob Spees, he will land on his feet, wherever that may be. But Rob is a hawk. His own kids are hawks. His place in this community is our community. So when this investigation shows he did the right thing, please make sure the place he lands is back at Hardin Valley Academy. Thank you.
Keith Galloway?
I'm Keith Galloway, Knox County resident. I'm also a resident of Hardin Valley Community. Actually, I do a lot more than just live there. I'm heavily involved in several aspects of the community. I'm the commissioner of the Hardin Valley Youth Sports. I'm a member of the Hardin Valley Community Business Alliance. And I am, I sit on the board of the Hardin Valley Foundation. I've been here in Hardin Valley since the academy first opened in 2008, working here for 10 years as a math teacher and eight years as the head boys' basketball coach. My wife, Jennifer, who just spoke, has been there even longer. She's been a teacher and the head girls' basketball coach since the school opened, and now she is serving as the freshman academy dean. All three of our children are in Hardin Valley schools as well, which is one of the reasons we commit so much time to the success of the school and the community. I challenge you to find anyone who knows us and our family who doesn't say we are high-character staples in the Hardin Valley community. We are dedicated to making it the best it can be, not just for our own family's sake, but for every family's sake in Hardin Valley. I don't say this to be boastful. Don't misunderstand what I'm doing. I'm conveying that our voice has merit and should be heard. And in that regard, we are incredibly disheartened by the way this whole situation is playing out with the gas leak incident on March 30th and the subsequent investigation. The day this all went down, it seemed like the situation where an unstable individual unsuccessfully entitled an act of violence. And it turned into a situation where an absolutely false narrative spread like wildfire on social media, causing people to believe something happened that in fact did not happen at all. But I won't go down that road. I won't sell you my conviction on what happened that day because I wasn't there. But I also caution you not to listen to the outraged keyboard warriors on social media who took limited information, likely from their children or from somebody else on social media, and made false assumptions that eventually led to an untrue story being told of what actually happened. Please don't listen to them about that story, and please don't listen to them when it comes to how our community feels about Rob Spees. They are the loud minority, and they do not represent what our community thinks about him. Which brings me to how I feel about Rob Spees. I've gotten to know him in multiple capacities these last few years, and there is no one I would rather have more as a principal at HVA than Rob. He treats HVA as though he's been there since day one. He took the challenge seriously of continuing what Calee Reynolds has successfully started, but in his own unique way. He is engaged and invested in our community, and he believes in the potential of HVA just like I do. He is a true hawk. And when this investigation exonerates him, it would be an absolute travesty if he did not end up back at HVA. Our community wants him there, and the vast majority of the parents and students want him there. And last but not least, the teachers and staff want him there. How do I know this? Because I'm engaged in the community. I know what it takes to be a good member and good leader in our community. And I can't imagine a leader more fit for this job as principal at HVA than Rob Spees. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Rose?
Hi, Jennifer Rose, Knox County. I want to start with thanking you guys for, again, having the discussion on Monday during the work session in regards to having our children's ABA therapist in school. As I stand here today for my son, but also for the group of other children who have sought ABA therapy in schools and have been turned away. The excuses we receive are many, but they involve arbitrary barriers. We have been told, one, Knox County schools will not recognize ABA therapy in the school, just like it does not recognize piano lessons in the school. Two, that ABA therapy is simply not allowed in the schools. And that, three, ABA practices, but not ABA therapy, is allowed. Accordingly, this is our formal request to the board for clear policy guidance to all Knox County schools that ABA therapy in the schools must be considered. ABA therapy is a necessary medical treatment for children with autism, a reasonable accommodation under the ADA. Much like medicine or insulin and many other accommodations, it will provide children with autism meaningful and equal opportunities. Here in Knox County, excluding ABA therapy has become a chief means of excluding the child from school altogether. We must constantly depart the school in order to receive the ABA therapy our children need. In closing, the current general non-discrimination policies obviously are not working when it comes to ABA therapy. Accordingly, we are asking for clear guidance to the schools, removing all impediments so that our request may be considered. And as we go through, and I look forward to the policy review on May 19, I hope that you guys really take into consideration that who gets to deem it medically necessary. That is a huge factor in our children getting what they need at school to have that quality education that every child gets. And I really appreciate your loss of time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes public... Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, you do. Thank you for reminding me. I totally forgot.
Don't try to cheat me out about 45 seconds. So, you know, I'm Erin Keck, Knox County. And really, what I have to say is directed to the ladies behind me. I want to say to you guys, I appreciate that you took the time to listen to these moms that have been coming out month after month and sitting through these marathon board meetings, and that you guys have listened to their concerns, and that you're putting a policy in place or considering it. I echo Ms. Rose and Ms. Piper that I hope that you do follow through with what you've told them. And to those mothers, I know that the people at home won't be able to hear me if I don't speak in the microphone. I really want to look at them and tell them how proud I am of them and how impressed I am with them coming together to advocate for their children. They have gotten such impressive numbers of moms together. And, you know, while I wish that you guys would listen to all of the community members the way you've listened to these moms, I have to give you credit for what you've done in this case. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now, Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
All right, meeting adjourned.